August the twenty four, two thousand and twenty. And because of the pandemic, we are conducting this under a special telephonic and telephonic and audio type system. Moving in our agenda, the call of business, which is item number one on our agenda. Item number two is the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Carbone, would you, I mean, Carbone, would you please do the invocation? And Councilmember Owens, would you do the pledge of allegiance?
All right. Thank you, Mayor. If y'all would bow with me. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for another day. Thank you for all our blessings. Be with us tonight as we, we make the decisions for this city, helping to be honoring and pleasing to you. Be with all our first responders here in the city, stating across the nation, keep them protected and safe. With everybody serving, protecting our freedoms overseas. Your name we pray. Amen.
The invocation, I mean, the pledge of allegiance.
I'll do it, Mayor, just council a little. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to thee, Texas. One state, indivisible. One state under God, one state indivisible. Hope I didn't mess that up too bad.
Thank you. That gets us off to a good start. I need to certify the quorum. Mayor Protem, that you can use confirm that we do have seven members.
There are seven council members are present.
Okay. Madam Secretary, I certify a quorum for the meeting tonight. Move to item number four on our agenda, which is council comments. Mayor Protem Little, would you introduce them to our have a chance to visit with them?
Thank you, Mayor. We have three individuals sign up to speak tonight. When you start speaking, state your name and address. You don't have a clock on your monitor. You have three minutes to speak. Please limit your comments to three minutes. I'll let you know when you've got thirty seconds. Well, you don't need me to let you know. You've got a clock. Anyway, the first speaker up, Jimmy Davis.
Councilmember Little, we're still working on getting his audio reconnected.
Okay, we'll go to the next speaker, Erica Guerra.
Actually, I'm sorry. It looks like he just got connected. Hang on. Let me try to unmute and see if Jimmy be there.
Yeah, thanks. Not sure why WebEx dropped. Okay, I signed up to speak since water billing is on the discussion on behalf of the Pearland Water Billing Discussion Group. I would ask for a little bit more time.
Your name and address, please.
Jimmy Davis, five thousand four Compton Street, Pearland, Texas, seven seven five eight four. City Council in February twenty twenty, city residents were told when the water billing problem came to light that they, in my project, was on schedule and would be completed by the end of February. Couple of weeks later, we were told it would be completed by the end of March. Then it became a, they couldn't say, they were hoping that by July or August, they'd be ready to start setting people up to find out what they own. Today, looking at the packet, we're hoping until they'll be completed by spring twenty twenty one. Slide six, taking on the February seventeenth, twenty twenty presentation indicates that no base rate charges will be applied after twelve annual billings to residents. This is an important fact. The interim director of finances twice stated in public meetings that the thirty-two thirty plan required revising down the revenue projections. This will likely be due to the city having accrued for thirteen base charges per year since July twenty eighteen and the realization that the revenue had to be decreased. Perhaps this is what Rastellis told them resulted in the lower revenue. However, today we have a memo from Miss Nancy Massey indicating the residents who seek to be caught up won't be assessed thirteen base charges per year. Today, residents have lived here for years, received a bill every month for years, paid twelve base charges a year. When they move, they're being presented with several months of consumption, all billed on a single monthly tier. Excuse me. People who never used more than ten thousand gallons of water per month, never paid more than five dollars and nine cents per thousand, are getting final bills at the top rate of eight dollars and fourteen cents per thousand gallons and overcharge of about sixty percent. Attempts to explain this to the new water billing and collections manager are either not understood, or this is by design to increase revenue. Pearland resident Miss Randy Lewis had a leak developed sometime in April twenty twenty. She learned about this in July, and she got filled shortly after when the city of Pearland came knocking on her door saying, we think you have a leak. Now, her ground was nice and dry. Her lawn's cut every week. They never said it's muddy. The first bill she got, her consumption, she had just three thousand three hundred twenty gallons of water a month. In April, her consumption shot up to four hundred sixteen thousand one hundred gallons. The next month, it was one million thirteen thousand eight hundred gallons for thirty-two days. That averages to thirty-one thousand six hundred eighty-one point two five gallons per day. That's one thousand three hundred twenty gallons per hour. Or more than twenty gallons per minute for thirty-two days. A resident wouldn't have water if they had that much water leaking. Miss, Miss Lewis contacted city of Pearland about it. As soon as they told her she had a leak, she contacted a plumber. The next day, they were out. They fixed it. There was a small crack in a pipe. The plumber sold it to her. The graph, there was no sinkhole, which, if you had two months of consumption, because the following month, they said she used a million thirty-seven thousand five hundred gallons. So in two months, she used two and a half million gallons of water, yet her grass was still dry. There was no sinkhole. And instead, Pearland shows up after two and a half months. She asked, she got it fixed. And the city of Pearland says, okay, you need to pay for all two and a half million gallons of water. She disputed it, and as of today, she's not been told that she's not going to be made to pay for two and a half million gallons of water. It's not possible to have a leak that would leak more than twenty gallons per minute. And the household does still function if this is what our city tells our residents to this day. You, you use the water, pay the bill. Next year, residents are going to be told, if you want to pay your bill, you're going to pay for thirteen months of base charges if you want to get caught up. Otherwise, take three years to get caught up. Needs to be fixed sooner. Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker up is Erica Guerra. Are you on this, Erica?
Yes, I am.
Okay, state your name and address and start when you're ready.
Thank you. My name is Erica Guerra, and I reside at twenty-six oh seven Kimmon Lane, Pearland, seven seven five eight one. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I would like to start off by thanking you for last week's vote in reducing the property tax rate. I am sure that the rest of the citizens of Pearland are also thankful for this reduced rate, considering the current situation that we have found ourselves in. What brings me here today is the COLA and budget discussions from last week. While I am pleased that the four percent is no longer on the table, I strongly advise that right now, not even a two percent COLA seems appropriate. Last week, I witnessed a very divided council with three members voting in favor and three members voting against. For those that voted in favor, I heard your supporting reasons, and yet I find it hard to swallow that we would even consider a four percent COLA to begin with. Now, I ask for those that voted in favor, are we willing to consider a two percent COLA while we have a six million dollar deficit due to the water billing mistake? Are we going to ignore Councilman Owens' advice that we should review the eight hundred thousand dollars spent on conferences? Should we contemplate this COLA when there are allegations that the procurement cards have unnecessary spend? And are we going to overlook that there is currently a six thousand to twelve thousand dollar yearly car allowance to certain employees? Does it sound like we should be handing out a two percent COLA across the board when there are things that need to be looked at internally? No. What it does sound like is that we should really consider implementing a performance evaluation on all eight hundred plus city employees. Councilman Bettis stated that in his personal business, he provides a two percent COLA to his employees. However, I do want to remind everyone that this is not a privately owned company, and we need to start holding employees accountable and to a certain standard. How are we measuring the said employee quote unquote investment that Councilman Bettis is stating we are doing by providing the four percent or two percent COLA if we are not measuring the employee performance? Considering that this is an increase across the board, then I also want to suggest that we should start these employee evaluations at the highest level possible, starting with the city manager. Let us establish this performance evaluations from the highest levels and work our way down to ensure that our quote unquote investments are truly paying off. This is what I suggest, and I look forward to your thoughts. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker up is Jeff Hunkle. Are you online, Mr. Hunkle?
Yes, sir. My address is thirty-nine twelve Oakwood Drive, North, Pearland, Texas, seven seven five eight one. In regards to the two percent COLA, citizens continue to say no raises should be given at this time. Many of these same people are out of work themselves, and we are in the midst of uncertain economic times. The original budget item was for two percent, and yet Member Perez tried to raise it to four. Then he seemed to throw a tantrum when others didn't agree, and then the rest of council said, well, we can't support four, but we will support two. I believe this was a tactic to get everyone upset, and then everyone agreed to back down to the two percent, which was on the intended result all along. Mr. Perez, does your company always give raises even during leaving years? City Council was spending thousands of dollars casually to drive this exact point home on August seventeenth video. At the one hour and forty minute mark, it was questioned the feasibility of basing the COLA on performance, which I have suggested several times now. Clay Pearson said the following, it has been my standing that two percent keeps up with competition, and they hadn't tried to parse it out based upon performance. They don't have a system to do this, and it seems like a lot of pain and quibbling about nothing. Nothing? So one point four million dollars is nothing now. I find it interesting, this is the same excuse why people couldn't pay their water bills and afford to catch up. Well, the software didn't allow this, and it would be too difficult to do. So when things are too hard, we take the easy way out. Everyone pays their water bills in the same way, and everyone gets a two percent COLA. Member Owen questioned the conferences and seminars that equal almost one million dollars. He said that was an awful lot of money, but Clay was adamant, saying all of these are very much needed without even compromising to say, well, we can review these items or cut them out. It seems as though when council questions spending, they do it hesitantly, like a child speaking to an adult. I thought council dictates what the city manager should do and not the other way around. I expect council to say, cut out conferences this year, or we'll improve the budget, period. If, in fact, the COLA is so important, I propose for you to pick one, COLA or conferences, not both. Which do you support now? Will the sea implode if you miss conferences for one year? Many may be canceled due to coronavirus anyway. On this agenda, they want to hire consultants to review the billing processes for ninety-eight thousand dollars. So wait, let's review this. Water billing was fine until senior management dictated a change in the reading structure. Now we're over eight million dollars behind in collections, which took the city two years to tell council and then another seven months to implement the fix. Now you want to waste more money to hire consultants to figure out how to properly bill customers? Does this even seem like a modest use of funds? People are really questioning the competency of people in certain key positions to fix the mistakes they created. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mayor. That completes all of the citizen comments. I want to ask the council now, if they're pulling anything from the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's move to item number five, which is public hearings. We have had none on the consent agenda, which is item six. Mayor Protem, do we have any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda?
Woody?
Yeah, I have two, B and C, and they're just for a little bit of definition, that's all.
You said B and C?
Yeah, B and C.
B, C, okay. Any other items?
Doesn't look like there, so it's just B and C, Bravo Charlie.
Okay, that's great. Okay, moving to consent agenda in this items, I'm going to ask Councilmember Alondo to do his good job on the consent agenda.
All right, consideration.
The exception of C and D.
I believe that's, that's B and C. Is that right?
Yeah, B and C.
Yeah.
That's correct.
Consideration and possible action of consent agenda items A through D with the exception of B and C, so moved.
Second. Councilman Little.
Motion second on the floor. Madam Secretary.
Member Orlando.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Little.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Moore.
Aye.
Member Perez.
Aye.
Member Owens.
Aye.
The motion passes.
Moving to item number B, Councilmember Alondo, would you?
Excuse me, Mayor, this is Darren. I just wanted to.
Darren, yes.
We lost you, Darren.
Okay, again, I, I'm sorry. I apologize. I ended up muting myself when I thought I was unmuted myself. But just wanted to clarify, when Councilmember Orlando made the motion to approve the consent agenda with the exceptions, did he say A through D with the exceptions of B and C or A through G?
It was A through G.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. I couldn't understand. I just wanted to make sure that it included the entire consent agenda. Thank you.
Did you add them number B?
Yes, sir. Consideration and possible action resolution number R twenty twenty dash one four seven, so moved.
Second, Hernandez.
Motion and second, we're in discussions. Staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, this is a recommendation for tires that will get us through for the next year. We buy these off the buy board that are competitively bid. This particular vendor, although is a new one for us, they are vetted and recommended. They actually are going to be providing a little additional services from our past provider in that they'll be doing the delivery and save us some time and money from that standpoint. So recommendation is, as stated in the item, nothing yet.
The only reason I pulled it. But the reason I actually have it pulled is, well, because you're, I mean, you're all over, and I was wondering, you know, is there a place here in Pearland rather than having a league city? I don't know.
So the, this is the bidder on the buy board that is the closest and the best pricing for us. So there may be others in town that did not keep current with the buy board, so they wouldn't be eligible.
Okay, and is this through cash or is this like an open purchase order?
So it's like many of our contracts for supplies, it's the price, individual pricing, and it's as needed, and the estimated amount is shown there in the word.
Okay, but I just wondered, is that kind of like an an open purchase order thing to where, you know, you just have an open purchase order for that amount of money through this company, and they just, as you buy down on it, it reduces the amount of the purchase order?
Right, that's like many of our other supply contracts where it's set up like that, yes.
Yeah. Okay, that's it.
Madam Secretary, I think we have motion second on the floor there.
Member Orlando.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Little.
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Moore.
Aye.
Member Perez.
Aye.
Member Owens.
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero to approve resolution R twenty twenty dash one four seven.
Great. Remember, Alondo, item number C.
Consideration and possible action resolution number R twenty twenty dash one five one, so moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, we're in discussions. Staff report.
Thanks, sir. So this, something we're looking forward to bring in into our fleet and our variety of responses that we can offer through our fire department. This is for a rapid response vehicle. Obviously, it's a heavier duty truck that's got a customized special onto the chassis, and we would add this at station eight. So that in addition to the ladder and the traditional equipment that we have there, we have this rapid response vehicle. So depending upon the call and the staffing, that we at least have the option to use this for some kinds of responses and maybe not bring out the largest equipment when it's necessary. So this will be something new for us to try, but we're looking forward to that. And importantly, this is the last vehicle, I believe, that's going to be at station eight and purchased through the TERS reimbursement is the plan, so nothing added.
Council, have any questions or comments from staff report?
Yeah, Mayor, this is Woody. I had that pull because we're looking at a cost of ninety-three thousand eight sixteen. And, and that's, I guess that's what we're proving it as. But if you go through and you look at it, the company says this is an estimate. This is not an invoice. So I don't know if we're proving an estimate or if it comes out a hundred thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand, whatever, but, but this is not an invoice amount. It's an estimate only.
So the award of the council will be for the amount of the ninety-three thousand eight sixteen.
All right, well, the people that gave you that, that price, it's noted on, on the information they send you that this is an estimate. It is not an invoice. So if we read it in for that amount, ninety-three thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars, that is the amount. It's over that. It has come back to council again.
So that's exactly what the amount is in the order, and they can decide if they want to sell it to us for that price and the standard procurement allowances would provide for that, that amount plus whatever, or, or that amount that's noted in the action.
Yeah, and that, Clay, that's the only reason, because they're not giving you an invoice. They're giving you an estimate, and they, they put that on the information they send you. This is a, an estimate only. So right now, we don't know what the amount of the invoice would be.
That the council will be approving ninety-three thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars.
Well, that's between you and the owner. They said it's an estimate, so they can come in and all they tell you, well, listen, I told you it's an estimate. Only information we've signed off and sent to you.
Council, any questions or comments based on the staff report?
Yeah, Mayor, since, since Woody pulled this, I'd just like to thank staff. I mean, I, I'd love to see this rolling instead of a, a, a tower truck that costs more than ten times this amount. So I, I hope this, this works out as a good test. I hope it's successful. We can reduce our response times and maybe get a few more of these throughout the city to reduce the wear and tear on the big lighters and pumper. So I'm, I'm excited to see this. Even better that, that the TERS is going to reimburse us for it. So yeah, thank, thank y'all for that, and I, I hope we see more of these coming in the future.
Thank you, Carbone. I know you've mentioned that, and we're looking forward to this too, and this will give us that flexibility to, and we'll report back, you know, after six months a year and let you all know how that's going through.
Yeah, I'd like to comment on this too. You know, several years ago, the council asked a question on, could we do something like this? So I'm glad to see this coming about and maybe saving some wear and tear and money on those big pumper trucks responding to, you know, every little car accident that we have.
Appreciate that. Any other comment or question from council? Need a motion second on the floor? You have a motion for that?
Member Orlando? Member Carbon?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Given that it's, is an estimate, and it's not an invoice, I'm going to vote no.
The motion passes six to one to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty dash one five one.
Moving into our agenda, the item number seven, matters removed from the concerned gentle item B and C have been removed and considered. Over to item number eight, new business. I'm going to put our heavy hitter, Councilman Carbon.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration and possible action, first reading of ordinance fifteen ninety four, so moved.
Second, more.
We have a motion and a second, we're in discussion.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, this is something that's come up rather quickly, but we want to strike while it's, the opportunity is there, and that's to refinance somewhere existing outstanding debt for even more interest savings over the life of it. This does not change the structure of this particular outstanding debt, but it is callable. And so I believe you'll hear a little bit about the savings we've already realized through some other refundings, but this one is more of the same in terms of very positive for the city. So I believe Mr. Robuck and or Mr. McCarter will start us up.
Question, I'm going to staff report.
Mayor, we do have a little presentation here, so.
Are you getting ready for a presentation, you say?
John and John, do we have you on, sir?
There we go. I just got unmuted. Can y'all, can y'all hear me?
Yeah, we got you. Thanks, John.
There we go, sorry about that. Let me get the video going also. Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. Mr. Pearson, good evening. John Robuck with BLK Financial Securities. As Mr. Pearson mentioned, we do have an opportunity to sell some refunding bonds to refinance some existing bonds that the city has outstanding for interest cost savings. This will not be a restructuring. We are not extending the debt. This is purely a play on the interest rates that the bonds are currently being paid, and then with the current rates of the interest start right now in the market. If you go to the first page of the presentation that's provided on your screen, this is the bond buyer index. As you know, I like to go through this every time I do a presentation, kind of give you that data where the municipal bond market currently is. This presentation was done two weeks ago. Since then, well, we'll start by saying two weeks ago, we hit all time lows. The low on the blue line there is the bond buyer index twenty, which is general obligation bonds, which is what these permanent improvement refunding bonds will be. The rate hit a two point oh two percent. Actually, I had to redo the chart to go below two percent, so that's always a good thing. It's bounced a little bit since then. The last two weeks has bounced by about thirteen basis points to two point one five. But again, in the, in the grand scheme of the last twenty years plus years, all time low environment still, a great interest rate environment with the city's rating, we believe we can lock in some savings by selling some refunding bonds. On the next page, this is just a brief summary of interest cost savings the city has locked in and realized since twenty fifteen, so over the last five years, the city has implemented eight bond refunding programs, and they've also, you have also repaid about two point nine, almost three million dollars, existing bonds to reduce interest cost, which has generated savings of over thirty eight point eight million dollars for taxpayers. So that's a huge number. You know, I applaud you for jumping in and taking advantage of the refunding opportunities when they are available, and I think you all like the one we're going to present tonight to you. On the next page, the bonds that we're looking to refund are this permanent improvement refunding bond series two thousand twelve. We have about thirty one point six million dollars in bonds that are currently callable on March one of twenty twenty one. I'm not sure if you recall, but back in twenty seventeen, the tax cuts in Job Creation Act of twenty seventeen did away with the ability for municipal entities to, on a tax exempt basis, current refund bonds. In the past, we could advance refund bonds on a tax exempt basis, well, well outside the ninety days part of the call date. But to keep the tax exempt status of the bonds, which is a beneficial lower rate for municipal entities, we have to wait now until ninety days prior to that call date. So the bonds the city has outstanding that most current call are the, are the two thousand twelve permanent improvement refunding bonds. That, like I said, have, have a call date of March one twenty two, twenty twenty one, which means we can sell them and deliver them after December one and lock in those tax exempt rates and that savings. On the next page, we kind of go to the savings. A lot of numbers on this page, but really I'd like to focus more on the far right, which estimates savings. The, the bonds, actually, we go to the middle, I guess, if you don't mind. The middle there, we have the less the bonds we refund. This is the two thousand twelve permanent improvement refunding bonds. We're going to refinance thirty six point six million in total interest, debt service, debt service principal and interest, replace them with the refunding bonds, approximately twenty seven point three million principal, it's almost seven, six point eight million dollars in interest to generate that savings. We are locking in about three hundred and ten thousand dollars a year of the next eight years, which is about two point four, almost two point five million in savings, or a net present value savings of seven point five one four percent. On the next page, this is what the debt service will look like after the refunding. There, twenty thirty, those are the TERS related COs, which we will be hopefully reimbursed by the TERS and Development Authority of Pearland in about five or five or six years, and once we get those funds, we'll pay those bonds off, and that will be more in line with the twenty twenty nine, twenty thirty one debt service structures. But like I said, the refunding will generate about three hundred and ten thousand dollars a year over the next eight years. And then to accomplish this, on the next page, this is attended scheduled events. Tonight, we're asking you to approve the first reading of bond ordinance to sell these refunding bonds. Starting tomorrow, we get to work on the first draft offering, preliminary official statement, offering document for investors, and then we'll come back to the fourteenth, ask you to have a second reading of the bond ordinance, and we'll have rating calls around the week of October fifth, and then sell hopefully the week of October twenty sixth before the election, and then close on Thursday, December third, and at that point, the bonds will be refunded, and they'll no longer be the obligation of the city, and we'll lock in those savings. I'll be happy to answer your questions you have on the refunding. Rick, Whitney, Tony Fisher are also on the phone. They drafted the bond ordinance we're asking you to approve, and I'm sure they'd be happy to answer your questions you have on that also.
So back to you, Mr. Mayor, and council, any questions?
Yeah. Council, any questions based on staff report at this point?
Yep. Mayor, a quick question for John. It looks like there's a slide missing that shows how everybody's getting paid on this deal.
The sourcing uses? I'm sorry, I did not put that in there. I apologize. The, actually, I can tell you right now, the estimated cost of issuance combined for the entire deal, it will be about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which includes underwriter discount of a hundred and forty eight thousand. Ready, company ready, just about fifty eight thousand, but again, these are all preliminary. Hopefully, we can come down a little bit on that by just getting their, getting their quotes from them. Bond counsel twenty eight, financial advisory about thirty four, and then you have your verification agent about three thousand, your printing distribution about twenty five hundred, and then your paying agent, escrow agent fees about three thousand.
Okay, and it's going to come back to us September fourteenth. Could you get that in the presentation?
Yes, sir, I sure can. Yes, sir, I apologize.
You're just testing me, I get it. I guess another question, I mean, we're down at historic lows. What other, what other issuance do we see coming on the horizon, and at what point do we consider issuing bonds ahead of schedule to lock in lower rates? And would it ever make sense to include those issuances with a refunding series to try to save on some of the costs?
From a standpoint of timing, we believed, and it still may be the case, the rates may bounce a little bit as we close to the election, but we tried to get the CIP done prior, staying away from the election. We had, we felt the time we sold the bonds, we're all time lows. I mean, we were very low, as you recall. We have since gone down a little bit further. We're starting to see a little bounce back. We are limited when we can sell refunding bonds to November, you know, sell November, late October, and then close early December based on the ninety day window for current. Selling new money bonds in this environment is, is a great thing. I'm not a big fan of selling bonds before you know you need them. You know, although you could lock in low interest rates, it's not a good practice to sell bonds, to sell bonds.
But I mean, at some point, it makes sense. I mean, we're not there, but if you came back on the second reading and said that the market's at one point five, at some, at some rate, I mean, doesn't it beg the discussion if we're going to stick with our CIP plan?
Without a doubt. I mean, the timing, I mean, there's other factors too. You know, the timing of that debt issuance will also, instead of selling next year and have it affect the following year's tax rate, if we come back on September fourteenth, you say, let's issue another fifty million dollars. Of course, I'm making up numbers here. It's going to have an impact on your tax rate next year to some degree, assuming you have such a tax rate. If you set your tax rate to lots of the capitalized interest, and that's going to cost a little more money.
Right.
It will, it will, you know, kind of alleviate some of that low interest cost, but.
Right.
I mean, that's, that's, that's more of a council decision than is, you know, a decision for me to answer. I mean, you, whatever you feel comfortable with and what you feel like you want to take on if you want to take advantage of the low rates.
I mean, I, I guess I would say, if we see something sub two on a twenty year bond, I would at least want to have that discussion.
On a twenty year bond, we're probably sub two right now. Yes, sir. I mean, right now, I can tell you these refunding bonds, they're again, nine year length, although we're saving for eight years, because we can't have savings next year. The interest rate is a point nine six percent.
Member Carbon, if I, if I could maybe offer up sort of, I don't know if this is a middle ground, but, you know, we would traditionally come first meet in October with our intent to reimburse, and, you know, one, one thing that strikes me is that we would look at that hard, and maybe I'll look at, instead of waiting till towards the end of the year when we have more certitude about the amounts and actually these orders, we'd bring that forward for the amount for twenty. That might, that wouldn't cause the problem that I think, that I know he's referencing of, you know, spiking our next year property tax debt service rate, but it would maybe take advantage of some of that interest rate window that you're talking about.
Yeah, I'd certainly be a fan of that.
Would or not, sorry?
I would be.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you just, you look at the, where we've been historically, and, I mean, we can't go, well, I guess I shouldn't say we can't, we shouldn't go to zero. We got bigger issues if we do.
Yes.
But, I mean, we're talking about two percent for twenty year money. So anyway, that, that's it. Thank you, and if you would, get that slide in for the second reading.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Alondo, that for sure.
Any other comment or question from council?
Just to follow with Member Carbon's suggestion, you know, I think before we actually go out for, my opinion is before we actually go out for any, any bond issuance, we should know exactly what projects we're funding and have a better understanding of what their costs are. And I get your point. I mean, it's, we know we're going to buy on credit, so why not, while it's cheap, why don't we preload the credit card? And I get the argument, but I, I would, I would struggle to justify getting too much of that debt in hand before we know exactly how much we need to spend. And I don't know, Clay, if that's kind of in line with what y'all were thinking for next year, but I don't mind being aggressive and taking an aggressive approach about trying to get the projects, get the cost of the projects estimated at least with a GMP or some initial bids or engineer cost estimates or things of that nature, but I wouldn't want to issue any debt preemptively until we've at least gotten that far.
From council? Madam Secretary, I believe we may have something on the floor here for us.
Member Carbon?
Aye.
Member Little? Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero to adopt or to approve the first reading of ordinance number fifteen ninety four.
Thank y'all.
Good idea, good planning there. Item number two, Councilmember Mayor Protim Little.
Mayor, consideration and possible action resolution number R twenty twenty dash one five two, so moved.
Second, more.
But most, and a second, we're in discussions, staff report on this item.
So, Mayor and Council, this is the fruit of idea that's been germinating, and this was brought to you in our February budget input, and that is to go for the workers' comp coverage into a self insured mode, but have a third party administrator and excess coverage. So we've been sharing that as that's been going along. We did go out for the quotations and so forth, and bringing that to you for your consideration with the items here. Melissa Solinger, in addition to being the safety officer for COVID, in addition to being the safety officer for the current hurricane incident, she's also been working on this as part of her risk management responsibilities. So she's available in the experts, and I believe at least one of the consultants who we've brought on is, is available too, if need be. But again, this is, instead of paying for premiums, we'd be building up over time to provide a pool of self insure money, and then layering the risk with these other coverages and some administration. On top of that, we're still ahead with our projections. Nothing to add.
Council, have any question or comment based on the staff report?
Sure. So in this, in this approach, we are subscribers to workers' comp as opposed to non-subscribers, correct?
Subscribe, Melissa, can you help me out on that definition term, please?
Yes, we have to subscribe as public entities.
So we're mandated to subscribe. We can't go not, we can't have a non-subscription plan where we have a little bit more capability to combat some workers' comp claims that we don't think have validity.
No, sir. This workers' comp law specifically excludes public entities from non-subscribing.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is the five year contract, Clay?
Renew each year?
Huh?
Melissa's going to help me out on that answer.
Yep.
It is a one year contract with four options to renew with guaranteed rates for the four years.
Okay, because I read in there it's automatic five year renewal negotiated already.
No, sir. They, they well understand that the one year is the guaranteed, and then we will be reevaluating each of the next five years. They're just guaranteeing that as the base rate.
I just didn't know. On there, this is a one year contract, or it's a one year, and then you automatically renew it for five. It's, and I didn't know if that had been negotiated in there that, you know, if you go in for five now, and automatic five, it's ten years that you're negotiating.
No, sir. One year with four renewals.
Okay, all right. But it just said it's automatic five year. Mayor, if I can ask, so the savings, looking through here, it looks like we penciled in, what, two hundred K of estimated losses annually, and so it's a significant savings year over year as compared to staying in the risk pool. I mean, is there, does it make any sense for the first few years to, to maybe estimate a little bit higher loss to help build that fund balance? Because if we go back to a couple of years ago, we had some large losses that, that we'd be hitting, hitting the stop loss policies.
We've had one loss, which was a fatality back in two thousand and sixteen, which is what you're seeing as that major loss. We have. We have not had any other losses over 50,000. When this was first proposed, uh, we, it was proposed to use just what we would have funded through the T M L contribution, and that's what's been budgeted for.
Okay, all right. Which should, which should result in a, a net, uh, a net growth on that fund over the next few years, assuming claims stay about the same.
Yes, sir. Currently, we're averaging about 78,000 a year in claims cost, so all of that will continue to build each year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments by class from city council for some good questions? Got any good questions? Madam Secretary, I believe we've got a special question on the floor.
Member Little. Member Little. Member Little. I believe we're having some technical difficulties, um, with members.
I'm here.
Okay, your vote, sir?
Aye.
Member Hernandez.
Aye.
Member Moore.
Aye.
Member Perez.
Aye.
Member Owens.
Aye.
Member Orlando.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Motion passes seven two zero to adopt resolution number R 2020 dash one five two.
Okay. Moving to item number three in our agenda, I'll ask Councilmember Hernandez and, uh, remember, uh, since you're young and got a lot of energy, you must read this entire caption in its entirety. That's listed as the wording of item three resolution.
All right, thank you, Mayor. And let's see, consideration and possible action, resolution number R two zero two zero dash one five three. A resolution of the city council of the city of Pearland, Texas, authorizing the power of eminent domain to acquire a water utility easement to certain property for the surface water plant project being a 0.4158 acre, 18,114 square feet parcel of land situated in the H T and B R R, uh, C O survey section 81 abstract 300 in Brazoria County, Texas. And being out of lot five, block one of Kirby Crossing, section two, replat number one is recorded under plat number two zero one seven zero two eight zero three five of the Brazoria County map records. Also being out of track one is described in special warranty deed to Cole A H Pearland, Texas LLC and recorded under Brazoria County Clerk's file number two zero one eight zero five one zero seven seven of the official public records of Brazoria County, Texas for the construction and maintenance of water utility improvements on certain real property described herein, authorizing the city attorney, or his designee, and other city officials to take such actions as are necessary to acquire said property located within the city by donation, purchase, or by the exercise of the power of eminent domain, so moved.
That's a good job. Usually our city attorney is, um, asking the idea of reading that, but you didn't miss, miss a stroke on that. We have a motion, is our second.
Second, Perez.
We have a motion and a second we're in discussion, staff report.
Mayor, I think that Mr. Coker wants maritime, so.
Okay, yeah. Thank you very much. Uh, Mayor and Council, as you are aware, anytime we acquire property or, or going to, uh, at least, uh, possibly acquire property through the, uh, means of eminent, eminent domain, uh, this is one of the steps we have to go through and that's, uh, declaring a public necessity by passing a resolution of this nature. Uh, just so you'll know, this particular project, it involves about four tenths of an acre. Uh, it is a water utility easement. The purpose of this easement, uh, is to ultimately transport water from, uh, our county road 48 surface water treatment plant to our, uh, ground storage tanks, uh, here in the area of, uh, West Broadway. So this is over near the, um, uh, fire station number five in that area. And, uh, if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those, but right now, uh, the parties are too far apart with respect to price. And so we have to at least initiate this process. And if need, if we can't enter in this process, we will continue to negotiate, hopefully reach a resolution, uh, without having to go through the process of eminent domain.
This thing blocks some pretty expensive land there. That's $6.90 a square foot.
It's not cheap.
And I guess it's long linear, uh, on there. Is this property, commercial property or what's it zoned for?
Let me see, one, one second as I go over to pull that up. Property, I don't, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry. Yes, uh, this is a commercial property just located, uh, just to the, yes, as you can see there, that, that commercial property, I don't know exactly what is that business there.
So I believe, I'm sorry, uh, I believe there's a, uh, rental, um,
Yeah.
Yep, off the west side of Kirby near a fire station five and the home, uh, home store, wherever that is over there. So it's, it's pretty intense, uh, retail, so it's a good thing that values are good, but not as good as they say.
Yeah, even our.
Do they have water sewer there now?
Well, it's a transmission line, so it's, uh, there's water, yes.
Yeah, I, I was wondering, other than, do we need 20 foot wide to run a line down through there?
It's, it's a substantial line from the, the plant, so, uh, I'll try and you can help. And it's going to be deeper, so I assume that's why you get to the 20.
Sure, so that's, we, we need the room in there since it's not adjacent to a right of way or anything to be able to maintain that line in the future. So size of the line, the depth of the line, 20 feet, 20 foot easement is what's necessary.
Okay, well, they want to make a killing off that, off that, really, $6.90 a square foot for that property there. It's, I guess, the only thing left to do is in it, don't they?
Agreed.
Of course, side force. Any other, uh, staff, uh, council questions or, uh, regarding this issue? Don't hear anybody else. Uh, we do have most a second on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Member Hernandez.
Well, it's always my hope that we are able to work things out with residents, but in the case of a public need, I will vote aye.
Member Moore.
Aye.
Member Perez.
Aye.
Member Owens.
Aye.
Member Orlando.
Aye.
Member Carbone.
Aye.
Member Little.
Aye.
The motion passes to adopt resolution number R 2020 dash one five.
Okay, Councilmember Moore, item number four.
Thank you, Mayor. Consideration possible action resolution number R two zero two zero dash one four zero, so moved.
Second, Hernandez.
Have a motion and a second we're in discussion, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is something else that, uh, has been, um, a good amount of time, uh, in formulating and, and we're very pleased to bring to you. And this is part of the, uh, relief for residents, uh, with, uh, the COVID pandemic that's going on. And this is initially using money from the Texas, new Texas cares act that was, uh, passed through from the feds to the state. And it was a direct allocation to the cities, uh, such as Pearland. And so, uh, as we brought to you in some of the planning and the budgeting, uh, we're allowed to use some of this, uh, for program as, uh, rent assistance. Um, there have been some small programs for people in need, uh, through our community development block grants, but this obviously is a larger amount. Uh, the caveat with all this is that, uh, uh, the money must be expended from the cares act by December 31. Um, it must be properly accounted for and, uh, documented, uh, so it's complex. And so with the, the short time and the requirements and the need to have, uh, connection with somebody, uh, firm that's, uh, got expertise and the ability to go forward, uh, at this scale, not, uh, you know, building something as they go along, but something already in place. That's why we come to you with this recommendation for impact strategies. Uh, they do this kind of work in other, uh, locations around the state. Um, they've got a proven track record and they've been vetted, so they will be able to deliver, uh, on both the documentation and the, uh, the web basis for applicants, uh, to get going. So, uh, it is 264,000 that was, uh, would be the administrative part of that, uh, as you, you see in the material. Um, and we have the Texas cares act, and then we're also going to be adding on, uh, monies from the community development block grant funds. So there could, could and should be about a pot of, uh, 1.1 million dollars plus or minus, uh, in the total program, including this admin, uh, that will be able to have offered up to, uh, people to provide that rent assistance, uh, when they're able to meet their qualifications. So, uh, we did go out and solicited, uh, qualifications and, and it wasn't just, uh, you know, uh, without any merit, looking at just impact. Uh, they did have their, the best proposal, uh, had the interviews with them, and so that's why we need to, uh, uh, move forward and we're recommending, uh, with the firm tonight here, as you see there. So, uh, Joel Hardy's on the line. He's, uh, like with all these many blank, uh, block grant, uh, programs and, uh, uh, done very, uh, well, we rely on him for those. And he, he knows all the intricacies and keeps us, uh, our ear to the ground for these monies. Um, and so, uh, uh, he's, he's done the work to, uh, lead this particular effort with his colleagues and team. So nothing to add, sir.
Where are they located at?
They work all over the state, uh, where their office is, San Antonio, perhaps? Is that what, I remember Joel?
San Antonio or Austin?
No, actually, uh, Impact is a local firm. Spurgeon Robinson is actually a local resident of Pearland. And, uh, however, he does do business, uh, throughout the country. Um, they are a major, uh, disaster recovery assistance entity that's, uh, probably performed work on every major disaster, uh, we've experienced nationwide over the last decade. Um, but they are a, uh, uh, Pearland and, uh, also I believe they have an office in Houston as well. But this is, uh, uh, for the most part a locally based entity.
Okay, thank you.
Is this money for the contract, is it coming out of the, um, money that we receive from the government to subsidize or pay for rent?
Right, I should have made that point, that, uh, the program allows for this administrative fee, so yes, it's not extra that we're paying out, it's part of the program.
Yeah, I think it makes sense to go with the company that you guys feel the most comfortable with, even though it's a little higher, uh, and the firm's local, so I don't have a problem with it.
Thanks.
You have a question from counsel?
Uh, so, um, I know that they're going to be taking charge of, um, of, uh, receiving the applications, uh, for, um, uh, for those who have rental assistance. Uh, do we play any part or is that, are we given, are they given specific guidance from, um, uh, from the administrators of the cares act about who qualifies, how they qualify? Are they going to work with any, or do we know if they have the ability to work with any of the local charities so that there's cross basin, so that these specific aren't siloed or, um, do we have kind of a next steps, um, once we get them on board about how we coordinate, um, communicating with those who are in need?
So, uh, good question, um, Perez. I think the, the plan is to make sure that local agencies that may have performed this work at a smaller level are able to redirect, uh, any outreach results that are given their agencies, uh, directly to this entity. Uh, they do have kind of a, you know, level of readiness as far as local communication because they are working with a number of other local entities in the area. And, uh, Fort Bend, for example, in performing this kind of work, they're accustomed to having to coordinate with local nonprofits and, and charitable's that have been doing this work, but at a smaller scale. So I'm confident that they're prepared to do that. Um, and most of their forward facing technology and components are going to be, uh, available for us to, uh, host on our website, which will also save us, uh, some dollars. And there are some licensing components that we already have in house that we'll merely have to extend in order to be able to, uh, do business with the entity as far as record retention, monitoring their performance and making sure the different, uh, levels of vulnerability, uh, in the population are, are addressed. Um, so they, uh, pleased us with their presentation along the lines of being able to conserve, uh, uh, serve the community well. And, uh, yet I don't think we'll lose any viability when it comes to the work that we traditionally do with our local charitable. In fact, we may be able to issue them a small portion of funds, just to kind of keep their, uh, wheels to the grind as, as, as far as, uh, something similar work. So, but nonetheless, we've got a, a, a great plan in place and it's comprehensive and we'll, we'll make sure we monitor for success.
Uh, Joel, as a follow up question, um, how much of this contract is completely self contained and how much is it going to require your time or other staff members' time, uh, particularly with, um, fraud protection or facilitation of the funds? Uh, I mean, is this just kind of a set it and forget it contract or, uh, do we have to pull a lot of staff time, uh, away, uh, to administer this appropriately?
Uh, that, that was one of our priorities, Member Perez, was to make sure that we did not have to exert additional staff time into areas that we would, uh, be pleased if we could outsource. And based on the track record of the entity, uh, and their work in this, in this particular field in the region, we're confident that we won't have to pay, play much of a role in monitoring their work, but we will, and of course, I'll do that in my staff and, and the, uh, I N T. So we'll stay on top of it, of it on a daily basis.
Okay, thank you, Joel.
Um, good job on that.
Any other council member? I'm sorry.
Mayor, this is, uh, Adrian. Uh, I, I had a question, so to kind of piggyback off of Member Perez's questions there. Um, I see, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the application will originate on the city of Pearland website, is that correct?
Well, we will have forward facing linkage to their, uh, technology. So their web portal will actually host the activity, but because we want to make sure that citizens are able to come to the city to, you know, kind of retrieve the, the services, we'll need, we'll be playing a kind of direct role and, and making sure that access is available.
Okay, so, but it, but it will be made explicitly clear that if they have questions or have you, all of the communication will be directed to Impact and not, uh, kind of going to the city and different people. So we don't have, uh, different individuals at the city potentially taking phone calls that maybe they're not prepared to take.
That's correct. And their call center capability and, um, clients with the regulations and knowledge about those rules, CARE Act and otherwise are well suited for that purpose. So they're able to do so without necessarily having to allow citizens to.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. I think this was a, a very thorough write up on this. And so, I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward with this. I, I think as was needed, as was, um, and noted in the packet, it does seem a little, a little, uh, high on the, uh, I guess the fee side, but I mean, for the timeframe and everything, it looks like, you know, it, it would definitely be worth it to move forward with, uh, a, a firm like this that has the experience necessary to make sure that everything is done properly. So I appreciate the hard work.
Once we add the C D B G and C D B G coronavirus funds, that percentage will go down, uh, significantly.
Do you have any questions or comments?
Hey, Joel, it looks like the, their original bid was 450,000, then we negotiated them down. That, that was a huge decrease. Can you give us some more detail on that?
Uh, yes, sir. I mean, we spent a lot of time and I have to thank purchasing and the finance department and our I N T for working diligently to make sure that was a priority. Um, I think the majority of that, uh, diligence resulted in reductions because, uh, the timeframe of the work was reduced. Uh, we were also able to encumber some of the licensing issues that would, um, go along with the technology piece of this. And we also, um, negotiated down the number of, uh, personnel that they would, uh, provide available to this. And, and we were able to provide some realistic, uh, characteristics as far as what the local conditions are concerned. So we partnered with Houston Apartment Association and some of their analysts to get a really good idea of what the true picture of need in, in the community is. And I think that's helped out a lot because some of their assumptions were rather high. So we were able to provide specific information that brought that number down in a number of ways. And, uh, Julie Blackmore was awesome in this whole process. So I want to thank, uh, John McCarter staff for, for doing a great job to, to get us on the right place.
Makes sense, thank you.
And other question or comment for counsel at this point?
Yes, Mayor, just a quick one from me. Um, I know that we're dealing with a, a limited amount of funds. Um, it, it's my understanding that there are some federal programs to enable similar type of relief for, uh, mortgage holders. Uh, I just wanted to know, Joel, if you have any, uh, any additional comment on that, you know, that, uh, any any additional comment on that, you know, that what other programs might be available for for folks who are struggling with their mortgage payments?
So we definitely debated about that option and IMT and Unified Command were adamant that we should, you know, look at all options as far as helping households. Fortunately, we looked at two issues that would challenge us. One, of course, was the availability of funds and the amount of timeframe that we'd have to administer programmatic resources. But the other would be a duplication of benefits issue. And there are other Cares Act related administration of funds that we believe we'd have to do a lot more to ensure that we aren't double dipping, if you will, on other federal sources and their allocations to individuals as well as the banks in particular that are in a position to be able to offer some, you know, extension of support to their mortgage holders. So that those were kind of the underlying conditions. I wish we had more funds available. And I think the 2575 rule was one of the ones that also came into play. And if we did not have that to deal with, we could probably extend ourselves a little further. But I think the most vulnerable needs are with those that are renters and we chose to prioritize that with this program. So it just didn't make a whole lot of sense for us to, you know, get into the mortgage issues when we don't have a lot of time or the resources to do it in the right way. So we kind of stayed away from that if we can.
Appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
And the question or comment for Council?
Joel, this is Woody. I saw on there that we got what 288,000 from Harris County and 56,000 from Fort Bend County. Do those funds have to be spent within those particular areas? Or can they be anywhere in Pearland?
Yeah, unfortunately, they do have some boundary restrictions as far as how those funds are spent. However, I have also been participating in the planning efforts involving those two jurisdictions. And they are willing to help us in ways that might cut across multiple jurisdictions, particularly where any pro rate of share costs are concerned. So we've got some opportunities where Harris and Fort Bend are concerned that are helpful overall. But for the most part, the allocations that they've issued are boundary specific and we can't go outside of Harris or Fort Bend with their respective dollars.
Oh, okay. All right.
They can help us out in some other ways, I think.
Any other questions or comment? That's a good good dressing down of a inquiry about. I believe we have most second on the floor.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Member Owens?
Aye.
Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone?
Aye.
Member Little?
Aye.
Member Hernandez?
Aye.
The motion carries seven to zero to adopt resolution number R 2020 dash one four zero.
Removed at number five, I'm going to ask our manager if he will share the share the background and the story on this item.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So Council specifically requested last week, I think it was last week, for a presentation update. It's been a little bit of time, but there's been a lot of work that's been done. And it's our pleasure to share that with you. We're going to talk about the utility billing update and staff initiated progress and some ongoing projects, and then some proposed changes in the rules we've been working under for long time decades. We also have a specific item, but it'd be appropriate to talk in here. Council, I know, has been looking forward to having a utility billing process review consultant. And so after we get to the presentation, we have a separate specific item for that that's appropriate and we'll touch on on the background for that here. And then somewhat similar, we have a budget discussion, a number three later. But it would be helpful to get some discussion as long as we're talking about the same topic area, or at least we'll introduce it here, about the late fees and staffing and fee changes that may impact the current budget. So with that, I'll turn to Mr. Branson and he'll he and the team will walk you through this.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. At this time, actually, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. John McCarter, our interim finance director, who's going to lead us through the initial part of the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Branson, Mr. Pearson. Appreciate the introduction. John McCarter here, interim finance director here with the city. Pleasure tonight to present to you this utility billing update today. Mr. Pearson hit on this. I won't spend too much time, but we have three items on the agenda today, all relatively related. First is the utility billing update. We'll go through a brief background of the work that's been done, how we got to the point where we're at now, give some updates on what staff's been up to since April, talk about some ongoing projects, some of the bigger picture stuff that Council's directed, we've discussed before, and then talk about some additional proposed changes that staff's put forth and we've discussed going ahead. We then have the award for the utility billing process review consultant contract. And then budget discussion, number three, obviously, utility billing and water revenue writ large are a big part of that as well. So we'll dive right into the update itself. Some background here for those that have not been following along since we began our utility billing discussions. But back at the end of January 2020, city staff made city council aware of a delay in billing initially caused by a move to a 28 day billing cycle back in 2018. Subsequently, really over the next three months, there were a number of council and staff discussions involving not just council staff, community as well, through February and March. And then in April 2020, the 3230 plan was adopted. Along with that, a change to the fee ordinance to update those tiers to lessen the impact on customers. Since then, we brought budget amendment number two, which includes the water and sewer revenue projections updated with those 3230 tiers included in them. Also notably, and a big deal back in August, we brought the fiscal year 2021 budget, which contain a litany of utility billing items, their base budget, the water and sewer revenue projections with those new tiers for a full year, proposed fee changes and staffing changes as well. Starting with staff initiated progress, I wanted to kind of start out with the big picture view of how staff is approaching general management of utility billing these days. Kind of the basic mandate that we've put forth to our staff and that we've done our best to live up to is despite leadership turnover in all leadership positions, those are all management positions in utility billing over the last three months, this division must continuously and proactively seek out waste processes that's both internally and externally to provide exceptional services. Lastly, here, I think captures some of what Mr. Pearson was hit on is, you know, status quo is not acceptable. That's based on how we've always done it. So the charge for our staff has been to challenge that status quo and make the changes that we need to make proactively to make sure we're providing exceptional customer service. I do want to just genuinely thank staff. They've been put in a very difficult position by, you know, circumstances beyond their control. And I don't just mean the new leadership staff who will be introduced later in the presentation. I mean, the customer service representatives who are helping customers every day, the utility billing specialists who work behind the scenes, and everybody in finance who supports them. Also want to thank and recognize our colleagues counterparts in public works. The meter services division is exceptional. Their meterings are the foundation upon which the 3230 plan has been built. And they are on target and have been through the process thus far. Also, capital projects, we'll hear from Robert Upton later, but that cap capital projects crew bringing in the AMI project will be a huge step forward for ourselves and our customers. And collectively, just want to thank staff for all the work they've done since the last time we talked in April and all the work ahead of us because we still have a long ways to go. So we'll start with some some staff initiated progress. Now, this this group of items, a lot of it's behind the scenes and more as an FYI on how we've been proceeding and changing things since last time we talked in April. First, I want to talk about department wide changes within the finance department. You know, utility billing is on the agenda tonight, but utility billing is one division within a larger finance group. And one thing that we've been pushing hard the last few months is to break down the silos between those divisions and make sure that utility billing isn't operating on an island. They're working with accounting, with budget, with purchasing, to make sure we're all talking to each other. To do that, we put out a weekly status report for all divisions and the entire department sees it, reads it, and make sure that we're sharing that information out to anybody who needs to see it. We have a few dedicated process changes that I want to cover as well. First is we have a set schedule now of major processes in New World. That's our billing and financial management software to eliminate overtaxing the system without getting into too much detail. We did have instances in the past where payroll and utility billing would run at the same time, and that recurring credit card would error out and it would create a major problem for our customers and for us. And we'd have to go and do it. That hasn't happened because we are now communicating better within the finance department. Also, a standard protocol regarding posting of transactions to make sure that we're putting out accurate bills. There had been in the past some bills that went out before transactions were posted. So the bills were incorrect. That hasn't happened again because we're talking to each other and making sure that we have standard protocols we're staying on top of. I mentioned at the outset, leadership changes, but we've really made sure we brought on high quality people in leadership roles in utility billing. Nancy Massey, our utility billing manager, we'll give a presentation later, you'll meet her, but also Dara Eng, who is the assistant billing manager, works behind the scenes. Lori Flores, customer service supervisor, works behind the scenes but interacts with customers a lot. Combined between those three ladies have 42 years of utility billing experience. That I should rephrase municipal water utility billing experience. And that that means that not only are they critical thinkers and leaders, they're people who know how the system should work and are subject matter experts. And they bring that expertise for us to build a system off of. And they've done an exceptional job in their short tenure here with us so far. Next, let's talk about utility billing as a functional unit. We've done several things internally in utility billing as a division to improve processes and make sure that we're giving the best customer service we can. First is improve cross communication between our outward facing component, that is our customer service, and our inward facing component, that is billing. That goes two ways, you know, with with the billing, it's making sure that if there are any issues that are discovered on the backend, that that's put forth to customer service reps so they can be prepared when calls come in. But also conversely, when calls come in and something's not right, making it from customer service on the front end to billing to get that resolved quickly is critical. And we've improved that process by leaps and bounds just over the last few months. That's a centralized knowledge center for all staff. This is really a repository of information, standard operating procedures, kind of the basics that we're working to put in one place. So regardless of who you are in utility billing, if you need to know how to do something, there's a standard operating procedure right there for you to reference. Next, additional checkpoints in the billing process. This means that we're not just going through New World, the billing software, and making sure that we're hitting all the right buttons there, but taking a step back and looking from the outside in to figure out what anomalies there are, double checking manually to make sure that there's nothing weird going out with the bills. We've caught several issues proactively just by instituting these kind of checkpoints where we take a step back and think about how things should look versus how they are looking. And then lastly, streamlined chain of command for escalated issues. That's making sure that when we have problems, we get those to the people that can make a difference or do an exception bill right away. The account that was mentioned in citizen comments was addressed through this chain of command and has been dealt with. That customer is now paying their average monthly bill rather than the billed usage because we have this in place now. Customer centered changes to policy, nice segue into the changes that we are making based on feedback from customers or proactively because we think something should be changed. Again, going back to status quo isn't acceptable. The proration of base rates for move in, move outs. Now, if you move out halfway through a month, you're going to pay half a base rate. That was not the case before. That was standard practice and and procedure to charge the full base rate if you've been there for a certain amount of time. Now that proration allows us to be a little more equitable with that. Mailing a bill is at least one day in advance of the billing date to make sure that they go out on time. The 3230 plan is at the center of everything we're doing. And by being proactive and getting these bills out a day ahead of time, we give ourselves time for something to go wrong where we can still get those bills out on time. And then lastly, updating billing adjustments policy to provide for the latency in billing. You know, we've talked at length about the two month lag time between usage that a customer has and them seeing a bill. Well, if you have a leak during that time, that's two months of billing that you don't have control over. We've updated our policy now to make sure that we can accommodate that and do right by the resident when that lag time happens. Lastly, on the staff initiated progress here, want to want to talk about communication because this is a really a central function that we've been focusing on. We've talked a lot about utility billing, communication internally and finance and across the organization, but how we communicate information up, that's to the city manager's office and the city council and to the public as a whole is really important. Want to thank and give credit to our communications department who got what I think is an exceptional website on the 3230 plan up and running back in May, which has just been invaluable to our staff in utility billing as a resource to point people to when they have questions. It's been a really great thing for us. Next, I want to talk about the utility billing governance memo. This was put together by Nancy Massey when she accepted the role permanently as utility billing manager to kind of set forth a path, you know, in her experience, what are the things that we need to do to become an exceptional utility billing division? This was published at the end of May and shared with city council at that point. Next, biweekly utility billing status updates. These are shared via the city manager's office every other week with city council. And it's really just a brief update on the major projects we'll cover today, and then some things that maybe aren't so major, you know, what staffing turnover, what positions are open, just what's going on behind the scenes to make sure we're covering our bases and being transparent. And then lastly, Thursday administrative packets. Thursday administrative packets are really the primary means by which we staff share information with city council. And we've put four of these out just the last three weeks, four weeks alone, because there's been so much going on. The first being the RFP for the utility billing consultant, which is on the agenda later tonight. Next is the true up plan for the unbilled usage and our intermediate plan, which Nancy will cover a little bit later in the presentation. Utility billing fee updates, which were included in the proposed budget, fleshed out a little further through the Thursday packet, got some attention on those, given the need for the attention there. And then lastly, the 3230 plan. Those bills went out for the first time this month. And by putting this out to city council, we gave a heads up on what was coming down the pipe to make sure we were being proactive in communicating about that. So with that, I'm going to hand it off to Nancy Massey, who's going to walk through some ongoing projects.
John, it looks like her microphone won't. Give me just one second here. Let me see. Here, you can, are you unable, are you able to unmute your microphone? You should be, you're a panelist on here. So you should be able to do that. John, I apologize. I can see that she's on here and she has her audio connected, but will not let me unmute her microphone.
Okay, just for the sake of time, I'll move through this one. Apologies, guys. You're going to see the B team here as I work my way through these projects, but we can follow back up with anything I miss after the fact. So I want to start with with the 3230 plan. Like I said, this is this is kind of the centerpiece of all the discussions through February, March, and adopted in April. To this point, all the meterings have been completed on time. I mentioned that earlier in my comments, but a huge thank you to the meter services division that's been on top of this. First billings are being sent out this month. You can see three of the four are already out the door. That August 23 billing means that went out yesterday. The next one up is on September 6. That'll be the the last of the first billings for the 3230 cycle. Thus far, we are on track. All these cycles are targeted, or I'm sorry, will be within the targeted 12 to 14 day arrears by spring of 2023, as we have published up on the website. Next, the winter quarter average. We talked about this through the budget process, but really worth mentioning again here. The fiscal year 2021 budget includes a change to the winter quarter average. Previously, the winter quarter average was based on monthly usage in December, January, and February. The new winter quarter average is now a cap on usage rather than a set amount. So existing customers pay the lower of their winter quarter average or their actual usage. New customers will pay the lower of 12,000 gallons or their actual usage. So you go below, but you can't go over. This was based on feedback from city council and it's built into the fiscal year 2021 budget. Looking at the highlighted 3230 schedule. So we here, this looks a little bit different than what's on the website. We did update the colors here just to make it a little bit easier, but the content has not changed. So if you see here, So if you see here, the highlighted pieces of information here are the ones we're drawing your attention to. Those are the bills, those, those dates should look familiar. They're going out this month and early next month, the first one for cycle fourteen. The reason it started the time it did is you can see four-thirty was the first read cycle after the adoption of the thirty-two thirty that rolls into when we can start the billing. So now we have the wheels rolling on this. This here, a little bit more information about how to read this chart because it's a lot of information. Everything in blue here is, is prior to the thirty-two thirty plan. The highlighted yellow portion here is the start of the thirty-two thirty plan, and then the green is, is the rest of the thirty-two thirty plan, and that takes us all the way through the conclusion of the plan where we are fully caught up on that within our standard range of arrearsage for our billing.
Hey, John, Nancy has audio now.
Awesome.
Okay, you guys, I apologize. I have IT in here trying to work with me on this, so I'll like to pick it up where John was, but can I, can I go back to the billing schedule itself? Because it is important that I want to emphasize the fact that on psych, on this, on this slide, gentlemen, I really wanted to show the fact that all the read dates and all the bill dates and the bill and read date information on there, none of that information has changed since the time you saw it back in April. And I wanted that to be emphasized here, as well as the, the dates that are in yellow is the, is the thirty-two thirty plan itself. And so I wanted to bring that all to your attention. I want you also to notice too that the date of April thirtieth is five days after the effective date of the new thirty-two thirty plan that council approved. The effective date was April twenty-fifth. Please note that the beginning of this cycle, or beginning of the thirty-two thirty plan was April thirtieth to June first. So it incorporated the whole timeframe on there for the first bill date of August eleventh. You can go to the next slide, Mr. McCarter. Thank you, sir. This slide is important too because I want to show this as being a snippet of the original, of the thirty-two thirty plan. Again, none of the dates have changed on this. The area in blue was the prior to the thirty-two thirty plan. The yellow dates again is showing the start of the thirty-two thirty plan. Notice that it incorporates April thirtieth through June first to the bill date of August eleventh. And again, that's five days after the effective date of April twenty-fifth. And then the dates in the green are the, are the, are the thirty-two thirty plan itself. The main reason for the change on this council, Mayor, Mr. Pearson, is because we wanted to be an identifying items for the thirty-two thirty plan. We want to show that the dates have not changed, but the, but the plan itself is just an easier way to identify what was prior to the plan and what was after the plan and what is during the plan. I should say what was during the plan itself. Next slide. This, we want to talk about the ongoing projects, the true-up plan. The true-up plan itself is, as discussed by council, customers can register now for the true-up plan. But this plan allows customers to pay their unbilled amount billed and to build these at current time, which is twelve to fourteen days after the meters read. That is what our goal is. In order to do this, currently, we read the meters through a drive-by system, an AMR system. So utility billing and the meter services crews must read both the true-up cycle customers as well as the thirty-two thirty cycle customers and for one billing time. Unfortunately, this is not feasible for us to do. But what we want to do and what we can do is provide customers a manual calculation of the unbilled amount upon request as an inquiry purposes. This inquiry is a snapshot in time. It is not an invoice. The true-up amount will be charged between, will be, will change between the manual calculation and the inquiry when the true-up plan is rolled out. So we can provide the customers that unbilled amount, but that amount will change because again, it's just a snapshot in time of when they're asking for this information. The expected rollout will be in two months after the AMI project is fully functional. And so at this time, I'd like to defer over to Mr. Upton, who will, he was our director of engineering, to speak about the AMI project.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's good to see you all. I'd like to continue on what Miss Massey was talking about today, but step back to give a little bit of a background associated with our AMI project. So late, late in two thousand and eighteen, staff reviewed and recommended to move forward with Itron after an extensive process of vetting out suppliers and contractors. Itron during this time would be able to provide us the equipment, the software, the integration, and the meter installation services for this program. During this, during this time and during the software integration component, we worked with Itron and our IT department to be able to make sure all of our security protocols that we have were implemented and integrated in. This did take a little bit longer than we anticipated, but we did make it through. And that way, all those security protocols that we put in place to protect our customers and their billing information is set and meets to our standards that we have. So with that, work began to actually install the meters in September of two thousand and nineteen. And at this time, we've installed thirty-five thousand five hundred and seven meters. We have about twenty-six hundred meters left to go. Those meters are what are pictured on your right, if you're looking at the screen. On the far right of that picture is the actual meter. That's a small five-eighths by three-quarter inch meter. It's also known as an ultrasonic meter, it has no moving parts. The component next to it is the endpoint that is mounted to the box. And those two work together where the information that is, runs through the meter is stored and then waiting for the AMR system, as Miss Massey mentioned, to drive by and pick up that specific snapshot of data in time. The nice thing, the neat thing about these meters is they're called solid-state. As I said, ultrasonic meters, they are different than our original meters that we had previously. Those meters were called positive displacement meters, and they had moving parts inside of them that would wear out and slow down over time. So moving to these, still maintaining our accuracy as required is, is our way to go. And we've selected that process. Also located at the bottom of that picture is called the leak sensor. We have about fifteen thousand leaked, leaked sensors put in place. Now, these are for the distribution system or the city side of the water, water distribution system. So that it's an acoustical system that works on background noise. And during the night, it reads its sound waves and then compares it to the next night, et cetera, and continues to revolve around that where we can start to become proactive in the public works department and the water distribution side to see where things to see where leaks may, may be occurring or starting, and we can be more proactive in our response. Also during this time right now, until the meters are installed, we're continuing to replace our lids and our boxes. We need to make sure that they are structurally, structurally in place and make sure that they're level with the ground. Secondly, is that we are also taking the time to GPS and all of our meter locations, all these meter locations so that we can have a direct database of exactly where they are located within one meter. Next slide. So our next component as part of the AMI system is that we are looking at installing what is called connected grid routers. These connected grid routers are located on the poles. These poles are about sixty feet in elevation, as you can tell, looking at the picture on your right. And to serve our city, to collect all of these, we need a total of fifty-three of these units. Currently, right now, the city has installed over time about twenty-seven. Located at the bottom of the slide, you can see those ones that are existing located in green. The new ones that will be supplied by Itron through the study of the area to make sure that we can correctly and have redundancy, redundancy in reading across the network is that they need to install the blue ones, which are another twenty-six units. So those poles will be required to be installed. We're in the process of getting those poles moving towards installation. However, during this time, as we were testing and vetting the CGRs that have been provided for the system, it was discovered that one of the modules that collects the data and communicates back and forth with the endpoints had a manufacturing defect. This was actually throughout the entire, what they call a CAM three module that had been produced. So Itron is also fixing and addressing these throughout the country that they have contracts with and also supply this module to as well. So we're in the process right now of waiting for that module to come in. We are hoping towards the end of October to have all these, looking at some arriving in September, so we can start with pole installation. Once that's up and running and the system is there, we will start to work and get the AMI system fully functional. But during that time is to test it and to continue to work with it, make sure everything is connected, work with staff, develop our training, making sure that everything is ready to go, and part of that is also our customer portal. With that customer portal, we'll be able to set it up to make sure that we get the customer information that they need and utilize. Next slide, please. So our next steps, Council, as we take a look forward and moving forward is to complete our meter installations in September of two thousand and twenty. Get the installation and working with Itron to install our poles needed for the additional twenty-six locations. Install the CGRs, all of them with the correct module on all fifty-three locations. Establish our network training, working with our staff, working to test and vet to make sure that the system is correctly connecting with, with our billing system, with New World. Development of our customer portals, making sure the information is collected. One of the things associated with the CGR modules and the readings associated with that is that we would be collecting on about an eight-hour cycle, meaning that about every eight hours, they would be uploading the data from the meter to the billing software until and into New World and into the customer portal. So every eight hours, that would be updating with eight hours of previous data. We'll go live with the system as soon as everything is tested and vetted. And then we will make sure that we have two months of data stored in the system so that it meets with what Miss Massey was talking about on the thirty-two thirty plan and that there's two months of data so that the customers can also see the amount of data during that billing. So at this time, with the, with the task that's set forth in working with Itron and working with delivery of some of the, the modules and installation of the poles, we're estimating sometime right in the second quarter of fiscal year twenty-one would be our, our go-live timeframe. With that, I'd like to go ahead and turn this back over, this presentation back over to Miss Massey. She'll continue. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Upton. Since I had some difficulties in getting online here, and I'd like to thank the IT department for helping me, I do want to introduce myself. My name is Nancy Massey. I'm happy to be here as your utility billing manager. And myself and our leadership team of Dara Eng and Laura Flores, we echo the mandate that's been placed in front of us that our goal is to rebuild the trust of the council and our customers. And we want to, we will continue to do such. Going forward, I'm following on this, this presentation, council will be presented with the recommendation to award the utility billing process and systems review RFP. I'd like to thank the evaluation team, which consisted of three staff members and two council members. I'd like to say thank you to Mayor Pro Ten, Mr. David Little, and to council member, Mr. Tony Corbone for assisting in this evaluation. The evaluation team had to review ten proposals, and we narrowed it down to four finalists, and all four finalist companies interviewed with us. And from that, we had one recommendation. So I'd like to thank the council members, thank you for your time, your knowledge, and your experience to achieve this goal. And my team and I are looking forward to working with the awarded vendor to rebuild that trust with our customers and the council. And with that, I'd like to turn the presentation over to Mr. McCarter.
Thank you, Miss Massey. I'll bring us home here with some additional proposed changes. And so these are items we have either already presented to city council or will be bringing back in the future that, that weren't discussed in April. We haven't been working on them since April, but wanted to cover them today. The first is, is one that we've seen some really great discussion about through the budget that we want to have a discussion about here. You know, we've talked a lot through the budget process. I say we, city councils talked a lot through the last meeting about late fees in particular, and I'd like to broaden that conversation to include the delinquency process as a whole. Rightfully so through the budget, you know, we're focused on a, a line item, late fees. You can see here is four hundred thousand dollars budgeted for FY twenty-one. We had a reduction of four hundred and forty, four hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars last year. But we're really talking about a larger process of, of delinquencies processing. Staff has basically held the, the standard delinquency process since February of two thousand and twenty. We are proposing through the budget and, you know, through tonight's discussion to resume that process in October two thousand and twenty. The FY twenty-one budget includes reinstatement of those fees. But I'd like to, you know, move the discussion to a little bit of a higher level. Obviously, I don't mean to scoff at four hundred thousand dollars, but it's, you know, in a sixty-million-dollar fund, the larger discussion we really need to be talking about is falling behind relative to, to collections and such. So with the halt on delinquency processing, delinquencies have been growing at a rapid pace. We've talked about this at the last budget meeting. And therefore, it'll take us a long time to get those back on track. And the further behind we get, the longer it's going to take us to catch up. So we want to make sure that we're at least cognizant of the decision that we're making to forego this process for the time being. So before getting into some of the numbers and some of the data behind the scenes, I want to talk about what is the delinquency process, just broad strokes. What does that mean when we use that term? The goal of the delinquency process is to ensure full and timely payment of billings that have not been paid by their designated due date. So that's the stated goal. What does that mean when we say we're going to resume that process October one? What, what does that all entail? Well, first of all, it will mean that staff will be reaching out to departments, I'm sorry, to delinquent customers before ten-one. That does not mean we will be catching people unaware of this resumption of this standard procedure. We want to make sure that we're not surprising anyone and that we're working with customers proactively. This means that late fees will be assessed only on accounts that do not enter into a payment plan or pay their full balance by their October bill date. It does not mean that every account will be assessed a late fee on October one if they haven't paid their balance in full. This means that payment plans will be made available to any customer that requires one. This is a change from our practice prior where there are some eligibility requirements. This is essentially a clean slate that we're welcoming anyone who'd like a payment plan to enter into one. This does not mean that customers have to pay their bill a hundred percent at midnight on ten-one. That's not what we're asking, not what we're proposing here. And then lastly, the disconnection of services is always the last resort, and it's only utilized after every other option has been exhausted. This does not mean that we're going to start cutting people off ten-one, two thousand and twenty. So all this taken together is really what I hope you take away from this slide is that our goal is not to be punitive, our goal is not to shut people off. It's to make sure that we work with the customer proactively to help them get cut back up. Because at the end of the day, the further they fall behind, the further or the harder it will be for them as individuals to catch back up as well. So we want to make sure that we're, we're working with customers to do right by them and to get them back on track as well as get the city back on track. Because the further we fall behind, the more and more that's going to become uncollectible as it gets further and further out. That burden, if that becomes uncollectible, falls on ratepayers. So the people that are paying their water bills are going to have to pick up that slack because this is an enterprise fund. It has to be balanced, revenues and expenditures have to be balanced. So let's talk a little bit about some of the data behind the scenes and, and kind of what are the numbers here? There's a lot of information on this slide, and I'll walk through it as slow as I can, respecting everyone's time tonight. I do want to make one note here, at the last budget discussion, we shared a number of five-point-one million dollars for total delinquencies. That included billing that was outstanding but not delinquent. So that was an inflated number, and I apologize, that's my fault. But that, that number included the zero to thirty days aged billing, so that, that wasn't a true delinquent number. This report here brings it out a little bit better and shows a lot more detail here, hopefully can inform our discussion tonight. But you can see the top two rows here are showing those billings that are either overpaid or, you know, overpay status or are between zero and thirty days from their bill date. The really part we want to focus on tonight is this middle section here, which is between thirty-one days from the bill date and over a hundred and twenty days. And then as you move across, you can see we're using February two thousand and twenty as our baseline as that was the last month that we assessed any late fees or when we begun the process or begun this kind of period of no late fees, no delinquency processing. So a few things I want to point out here, first of all, is the balance at the hundred and twenty-day-plus mark has increased every month. It's currently nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which is an increase of twenty-nine percent since February. Overall, delinquencies, which you can see in this cell here, have increased sixty-three percent. That's, that's up to five, six hundred and, I'm sorry, up six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars from February. Notably, you can see that the biggest jump is from July to August, and August isn't over yet. And our delinquencies increased two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. That's, that's the biggest jump we've seen. Um, and our delinquencies increased $233,000. That's, that's the biggest jump we've seen over the span of time. And then lastly, you can look at the billing dates between or the aging between thirty-one days and a hundred and twenty days, and you can see triple-digit increases here on, uh, the revenue that's outstanding in, in those, um, those time slots. Uh, what that means is people are falling further and further behind and working themselves closer to that hundred and twenty-plus mark, uh, where we see a lot of written off, a lot of uncollectible debt. Um, as people move and, and circumstances change, uh, that can be difficult for us to, uh, to collect on. So that begs the question, we talk about revenue, but what about customers? You know, we talk about a customer-centric approach. Let's look at customers. So you can see here broken up by the different, um, customer types, uh, the exact same chart. So we, we start in February two thousand and twenty and work to August. I should say this data is as of middle of last week in August, so nineteenth, twentieth, and we're in there. Um, but you're seeing similar patterns. Uh, the amount of delinquencies have doubled since February, the number of them. Uh, they've increased every single month. Uh, we see residential customers are the largest increase, a hundred and six percent. Uh, or three thousand more, um, residential customers are delinquent now than they were in February. Um, and then, you know, notably here, if you look at the bottom, bottom section here, change from prior month, we saw a, a steady increase from a hundred and forty, um, account increase, you know, churning up to June, and then we see a big spike, uh, from two ninety-two up to over a thousand, and we've maintained that in August. So we're seeing that spike up higher and higher now recently. As, as we move forward in time, uh, we focus on this data and give you guys this background information to inform a decision um, for us to, to take from you and, and move forward, not just from the budget perspective, but more importantly to this conversation from the customer service and that, like Nancy mentioned, the building trust perspective. So we can, uh, we can carry out the will council and make sure we're doing right by our customers. Um, another proposed change that, uh, we'll be coming forward to you at, at a future date, uh, are some ordinance changes. There is a lot that we could do as a staff, uh, to change how we operate. We've talked about that earlier in the presentation and some changes that we've made based on customer feedback, um, or just best practices that we brought forward as a staff. There's a lot that we cannot change as staff. Uh, a lot of that comes from the ordinances and those are set in stone. And obviously you all are familiar with the process, but for anyone who's not, it takes two readings of city council to amend an ordinance or change an ordinance. So that's a big process and we will be bringing back, uh, changes, some of which will be, you know, changes in process that'll be very consequential for customers and others will be cleanup language, uh, things like that. Uh, but that'll be coming at a future date. Uh, we'll put out a Thursday packet and give lots of notice and make sure that people are, are, uh, are ready to have that discussion when, uh, when we get through those changes. Additional staff, this is another item that came through the budget that, that got some discussion. So we wanted to make sure we gave it some attention here. And we're clear about our intentions and, and what our thinking is. Um, in the, in the budget this year is a utility billing team. It's a hundred and nine thousand dollars for the full calendar year. That is twelve months. Um, in, in the budget, this would reclassify a lead billing specialist to a, uh, billing supervisor and add two billing specialists. So currently we have two billing specialists and a lead uh, billing supervisor, all of whom report up to the assistant manager and the, uh, the manager. Uh, that's not a real functional work group. And what we're trying to do here is establish a team similar to the way we have on the customer service side, where you have one manager that's accountable and four direct reports, one for each cycle. Um, to make sure that we have some accountability there and we have adequate support on each one of those cycles to make sure they're getting the attention that they deserve. Uh, this position would be, all these positions would be effective October one. Uh, the timing of this is intentional and we are very aware that October one means that we will be funding these staff, uh, positions before the consultant has finished their report. Um, this is because we've identified this as an immediate need. Um, it shouldn't be a surprise that we are, are facing a lot of scrutiny in our budget and, I'm sorry, our billing. And we want to make sure that we have resources there to support accurate billing upfront. And when it goes out the door, uh, we feel that these two positions are, are essential for that to happen. Um, if we opt to wait for the consultant, uh, in their proposal, they, they put forth sixteen weeks, which is almost four months, which would be four months. Um, and then you have to build in time for recruitment of those positions if, you know, they're, they're in that report. So we're looking at February two thousand and twenty-one at the earliest, which is just, it's too far out from an operational perspective. That's why those are built in the budget here. That's why they're proposed as a part of the, uh, the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one budget. Lastly, future reporting and dashboards. We were really, really excited last week to put out our first interactive dashboard on the budget. Hopefully everyone's checked that out and clicked around in that a little bit. Um, we have similar functionality really across our systems and, uh, one thing that we've been working on, uh, really the last few months, um, is an interactive dashboard for utility billing. Uh, this will be public facing when we get it up and running. Um, but we, we're working internally to develop this platform. I don't have KPIs, key performance, uh, indicators. You know, revenues, obviously the big one. We talked about delinquencies. Uh, but the bill to read date is important to make sure we're staying on track with the thirty-two thirty and a litany of other items. With utility billing, thirty-six thousand, I believe, plus customers, there is a ton of data to scrub and get through and make sure it's all accurate. Um, so we need to make sure we're doing that. So what we're putting out, um, is correct the first time. And we're again, using this as an opportunity to build trust. Uh, but that's coming. Um, also, we're working to improve reporting for our call center, our customer service reps to make sure we're going beyond just call time and account number. Excuse me, but also talking about call type. So we can not only say how many calls have we received from this resident, but what types of calls are driving long call times, which invariably, you know, drives uh, wait time for people calling as well. What can we do to minimize that? Uh, those types of analytics are doable and we're working closely with IT, uh, to make sure that we're being proactive, getting those set up so we can inform our own decisions, make sure that we are putting forth the best customer service that we can. So with that, um, I'll, I'll hand it back to Mr. Pearson here. Obviously we are open to any questions, comments, concerns, uh, direction from city council. We do need direction on the delinquency process in particular, um, because that's a budget item. We can build that dollar amount in and, and plan for that accordingly. Um, I'll also point out that next up on the agenda is the award for the utility billing process review. Uh, so that'd be an action item to award that contract. So, but that I'll hand it back to you, Mr. Pearson. Thank you, uh, Mayor and Council for your time this evening.
So thank you, John, Nancy and Robert. Uh, obviously a lot of information and, uh, I really, uh, don't have anything to add. We're looking forward to your comments and questions, uh, as we go forward here.
John, you did a good job and, uh, you did show up, but, uh, you, you sent a good, good representative. That was a good presentation. Let's move to some, uh, questions that the council might have at this point.
Mayor, this is Woody.
Woody.
Yeah. Uh, you know, going back over some of the information and, and, uh, you know, John, thank you for laying some stuff out. But I guess the thing that really stuck in my craw is a little bit, uh, the hundred and twenty day increase from seven hundred and fifty-six thousand to nine hundred thousand dollars and from February to, um, August, a twenty-seven percent increase. And then the number on the delinquency was thirty-one, thirty-one hundred people to six to two hundred on there. And you kind of wonder how that happened, but, uh, when we go through all of this and everything that has been done, new people, uh, new computer stuff, ten million dollars and, and, uh, meters and all of that. And then what gets me is a last statement down here. It says, "Longer delinquent grows, harder to recoup." The lost revenue would have to be picked up by other customers. Is that the last resort? The other customers that are up to date, it's going to get charged additional money to cover up for all the losses?
So, so just, yeah, just to clarify on that, that statement. So i- in an enterprise fund, you know, we have, um, the water rates support the expenditures that are required. So we set those rates, you know, in accordance with, with customers. And when that revenue doesn't come in, you know, and, and it gets written off, that means we can't use that revenue to offset a future rating. So that revenue is not available for us when we set the rates for the next year.
What is our total loss of revenue at this point in time? Do we know? Do we have any idea what it is?
So the only revenue loss is what's explicit there for the, uh, uh, delinquencies. And that's, uh, that would be recouped if everybody paid it back. And if you're alluding to the separate, uh, uh, arrears, that's not lost revenue either. So that's, uh,
The, the arrears right now.
I, I, when we reported last, I, I don't want to misstate it. So it, it, that's for usage that's, uh, been consumed and not, not billed. It hasn't even been billed. So that's not lost revenue. It's a tiny, tiny issue.
Overall, and, and this was a, this was, uh, was a good presentation. But, you know, we have done, uh, and I say we, the city has done just about everything of changing, you know, the meters out. New systems, new software, new hardware, new people, uh, coming in to staff it up. And now somebody, you know, even New World coming in to tell us how to do the system again. That has been done. So all of that's been done. And now you want to hire somebody to come in. And, uh, so when do we get to the point that we'll see something positive come out of the water instead of having all the people in the residents around here complaining about it? All they can see is dollars going in and, and, and nothing coming out. So, I mean, you know, you've done just about everything you could do, I think, but it's still not working. Do we, do we have any idea, John? On these accounts that a hundred and twenty days late of why they are a hundred and twenty days late? Do we have any idea from the people that are late on their accounts, reason why?
We haven't assessed a late fee since February two thousand and twenty. So we have a standard delinquency process that we follow that when your, your bill is passed due, you are assessed a late fee in accordance with our, our fee schedule. Uh, those have been suspended since February two thousand and twenty initially. Uh, you know, as we came up with the thirty-two thirty plan, but now obviously COVID plays into that situation as well. And before we staff resume that process, we wanted consensus direction from city council, um, to make sure that, that was okay. But we, we haven't, we haven't done our standard delinquency process to try to recoup that cost since February two thousand and twenty, early this fiscal year.
Okay. Just wondering, I, I, I don't know, we've been going through this for several years now. Uh, through there. Okay, that's, that's mine.
And I mean, that, that's the, that is the la- lost revenue, the four hundred and thirty, four hundred K. That, that's gone. Right. So when we talk about lost revenue, that, that's, that's what was lost through this whole process. Now, we might have some collection issues when we're looking at, at over five million dollar or one point seven million delinquent, but, but true dollars that are never coming to us, even if everything works out perfect, it's that four hundred K, right?
At, at least a portion of it. I, I don't know if I would say the whole four hundred K, but yeah, when you get further out, it's, it's absolutely harder to recoup that. So yes.
John, this is Councilman Little. Looks like you guys are addressing a lot of the issues we have with utility billing and, um, you're addressing more as, as we go on. Which areas are you guys hoping that, um, these consultants can help you with? Which areas do you feel like you've got a pretty good handle on?
That's a good question. Um, I'll do my best. Um, you know, I think what the consultant brings to the table is an outside view. We, we, I, you know, I talked about, and we talked about the leadership staff that came on board, uh, just in the last three months and, and that fresh perspective and expertise. You know, I made a point to talk about the many years' experience that, you know, the three ladies who run that division have. Um, you know, that fresh perspective has allowed us to reorient a little bit and, and to get some fresh eyes. I, I think having somebody who's a professional consultant, a third party, you know, not a, a city apparently and staff member, giving an outside, you know, back to front, y- you know, review of everything that we're doing is only going to make us stronger. So I don't know that I would point to, you know, one area in particular. Um, but really it's just an opportunity for us to catch our blind spots and, and get better. And, you know, that mandate we talked about, it's just another tool in our toolbox to get there.
Okay, thank you, uh, and good job on the presentation tonight.
Mayor, this is Adrian, uh, if I may. First, I wanted, I get a couple of points. First and foremost, so that was the first presentation I'd heard by Nancy and, um, you know, John and, and Robert typically do a great job, but Nancy, you are phenomenal. You're a very strong presenter. You speak with confidence. You had great energy clarity in your presentation. So I, I appreciate that. It was, it was really nice to hear you and, and, uh, hear your introduction. So we're glad to have you aboard.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Yeah. Um, second point is, uh, looking at the chart of the frequencies, is, do you think it would be possible for us to discuss, um, some type of a fee reduction program similar maybe to like the warrant forgiveness programs where we can say, "Look, we're going to start assessing these fees soon. If you can, you know, take care of, um, delinquent balances, maybe we'll give you a, a break on some of the fees, things like that, and start pushing that out as we ease people back into fees being on their account or, um, has it been discussed at all, anything like that?"
You want that Nancy or John?
Uh, I, I think we absolutely could.
I, I agree with you, John. I, I'll, I'll address that one. Um, I do agree with you on that. There are some things that you have to look on a case-to-case basis. Uh, in the, in the twenty years of my experience on that, there are people that are choosing not to make the payment because there's no action being taken to shut off the water. But then you also have, then you also have customers too that are meeting that, that dire need of, of what COVID has done to them and is unable to make any kind of payments. And so as, as Mr. McCarter said in, in the presentation, you know, we have a, a, a escalation part to, uh, to set up a, a chain of command with the team that we have in place now. So it'll be a faster response by a customer service rep to a customer service, uh, too, if they're unable to negotiate to, uh, to a payment plan for the customer. And if it is something special to a customer that's going to be a case-to-case because they've been affected by COVID, yes, we could put something in a place that'll be, uh, i- in lack, lack of a better term, kid gloves to assist that customer. The last thing you want to do is they're making every effort they can to make a payment, but yet they've been, uh, they've been affected by COVID in such a way they've lost their job and unable to assist and unable to go forward.
Okay, you, you're touching on my next point. So I'm glad that you kind of brought that up. Um, with regard to the, the reconnect, which is I guess being renamed processing fee, um, and moving that from currently being a thirty for the first time or fifty-dollar assessment for the second, uh, reconnect. Um, I guess the, moving all the accounts or all the reconnects to just a flat fifty dollars, I can see where it would bring in the additional revenue. Um, but I think given the circumstances in particular, um, it just, I know it would be a ninety-six thousand dollar hit to the potential, you know, budget in this area, but taking just having that at the flat thirty dollars, it seems like people that are experiencing their water being shut off are probably already having some hardship issues. And if, if, I mean, if we have a hardship program, maybe that we can put in place where we can do the, you know, case-by-case basis, I think maybe that's fine. It seems like it may get a, a little, um, difficult to manage, especially given the number of accounts that we're working with now that are delinquent. Um, or just again, putting it at that flat thirty dollars and I think making it a little bit easier. We don't need to hit people for another twenty bucks when they're already struggling to, to pay their water bill as it is. So that was kind of the third point I had. Uh, which I'll let you respond to in a minute. And I'll make my last point and then I'll go ahead and fall off and let you respond. I, I did look at the, the information provided for the true-up amounts and to Mr. Davis who spoke earlier, he had made a comment about, um, I guess somebody's, uh, moving and their previously non-billed consumption has kind of accelerated. And, you know, he's said that it's put in all one tier and I'm not sure that's the case. I mean, looking at the write-up, it shows that it's kind of broken down month one versus month two. But I also see that there are the base fees in those additional bills and I, are those unbilled portions, aren't those already connected to previous months? That the base fee would have been assessed on the previous months already had the, I guess, the, the reading, um, the time span of those readings not been twenty-eight days, but been slightly longer, they would have been included in that initial base rate. I was just a little confused on that. So maybe if you could also address, um, that point, um, that will cover all of the questions and comments that I have. So thank you so much.
So let's start with the, um, the question on the hardship program. Um, you know, we do have, um, means be a staff to waive some of those fees if we need to, uh, but if something, one, you know, if we want to bring something back to council, we absolutely can to formalize that, you know, and, and talk that through further. That's something that we can explore. Um, on the, the true-up amount and particularly on, on last bills. So, um, the, the last bill is going to go out like a normal bill would. Um, that means that, you know, when, when a month surpasses, they're going to see a bill. When another month surpasses, they're going to see a bill and each one of those is going to have a base rate um, attached to it. So it's not going to be all in one bill with one base rate, um, because we're, we're catching up. Those, those meter reads are happening at a thirty-two day cycle now. It would have been twenty-eight prior, thirty-two now. Um, and, you know, that meter read guy doesn't know that you're moving out of your house. So he's going to read thirty-two days. You know, he's going to send it over to utility billing and they're going to process a bill. Um, and then when we get the move-out order, you know, partway through that last month, that's just another, another bill standard generated and it'll be prorated based on when that individual moved out. I'm not sure that that answers your question, but, you know, in response to, you know, it's not all one bill and, and they're, they're really just standard bills going out until the end date on, on the move out account.
I, I guess that the way that I'm, that I think I'm understanding what Mr. Davis is bringing forward. And, and I apologize, I'm somewhat unclear on this, but I'm trying to make sure that he provides a, a response to his inquiry. That any unbilled amount that is outstanding, I guess technically belonged to a previous month. And we kind of let that accrual build. So given that those unbilled accrual portions, whether it be two days here, three days there, belonged to previous cycles, if you will. That were just read in a, a shorter time span than I guess maybe what normally would have been read now that we're on the 32 day read cycles. Wouldn't they have, I guess, in theory, been included in a previous month already that had been assessed a base rate?
No, because the, the base rate for that previous month was the base rate for the, the usage that was billed in that month. And the base rate that's assessed in the next bill is the base rate for the usage billed in that month. And, and that, those bills go out and, and eventually catch up to when the move out date is. So the, the base rate's tied to the usage in the month it's billed. So it wouldn't cross over months. It's a base rate per, per billing cycle. Nancy, I might need some help here. Do you have anything?
Correct. No, he's, he's right. He's correct. And that is a correct statement. You're being billed on a base rate based on the billing month itself. So you're, that base rate is associated to that other billing period, of that reading period. So it's not going into another one. It's based on just that reading period itself for the base rate. And, you know, when, when Mr. Davis pointed out something being 60% over, we actually did a, we did a, an experiment on that to show that. We did it on his account itself. Then we showed him where his two unbilled bills and then we did a final bill. And when he said he was 60% being over, being, was being under charged, we actually changed that it was not. And it showed it differently. So my concern is, is that it is correct, but it is, I, I do believe too, that the base rate is just that of the reading period itself. Councilman Hernandez.
Okay, I, I understand better now. Really just trying to, oh, sure. Was that a sneeze? Bless you.
Yeah, sneeze. Got to love allergies.
Yeah. Well, okay, yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I was fully understanding it. I have these conversations and, you know, obviously I want to act as a resource as well for the residents who reach out. So, you know, I'm trying to, you know, gain some clarity myself in that, trying to go look what's in the packet and reconcile that with, you know, things that are being said and asked of me. So I appreciate that response. So again, I'm glad to have you on board, Nancy. I think you're, you're a great addition to the team.
Appreciate it too very much. And I'm very happy to be here.
Um, John, I had a question. You had mentioned that the water utility billing staff was checking bills before they go out and caught several bills that were wrong, that New World, I guess, produced wrong. What, what is the fix to fix New World if it's not reading the information correctly?
So mainly it's, it's setup issues and, and tying, you know, I think the two that I'm thinking about off the top of my head had to do with two inch meters and three inch meters. And some change outs that occurred. And it's really just doing a manual calculation when one of the circumstances changes. So we're not seeing, you know, systemic issues where all five eighths inch meters are being read incorrectly or not being read, being billed incorrectly through New World. It's mainly what happens is, you know, something changes on the account and a manual update needs to happen. And we pull it out and do an exception bill based on that. You know, Mr. Branson shared, you know, in the past that when we have run into those systemic issues with New World, we have escalated those. And we've been, you know, reimbursed via services and, and training in particular for that. And I don't believe we have any systemic outstanding issues with New World as of now that are affecting our customers.
Okay, thank you.
That a good presentation. And I think, you know, I'd like to see you do this about every whole quarter or so, maybe not this detail, but bring us kind of up to date on where we are in the process. And I think it's very, very helpful. And unless the council has any further questions, we do have several more items on our agenda.
Yep, Mayor, I do. I'll, I'll try to make it quick.
Okay, no problem.
First of all, good presentation and, and I'm fixing to dive into a bunch of questions and sit in indictment of current staff, just issues that we need answered. First of all, you know, you made a comment that we had to move around when we processed credit cards and ran payroll. With, and, and I mean, that's a great, great that staff figured it out. But I mean, seriously, with the millions of dollars we've spent in the IT department, we're getting issues because we're overwhelming the servers. I mean, I, that, that I, I just, I, I have trouble figuring that out. I mean, that, is that? Is that true?
John, I don't think we can quantify it. I mean, the, the amount of data is massive as well. So, I mean, when you do those things simultaneously, it's just a question being able to sequence them. So they're not running, they're running sequentially instead of in parallel. So. There's also GIS, massive amounts of information that can get run. It's a, a large picture of, you know, what, the money we've spent has been for a variety of things and, and has seen us through and helped us, kept us going through COVID and all kinds of growth and all kinds of things to catch up. And, but it, it's this, I remember they were talking about, you know, another data drop of, of data information. It's just large amounts. But we can quantify that.
Yeah. I mean, it just, I, I don't know. I have a hard time believing we can't run payroll and process credit cards for a cycle simultaneously. If you go to slide 11, it shows where we're at, what I guess 73 day gap down to 13. What is that AWA recommended range?
Nancy, I might need your help on that one.
Not a problem. It is 12 to 14 days of the, of the timeframe on that. And, and I believe that's what they, even when we were doing the presentations on, on the RFP, Mr. Carbon, they were also discussing the fact that it should be 12 to 14 days of the, from the meter reading to the, to the time that you want to bill a customer.
Okay, for some reason I, I thought we were out to 30 when, when we first, first talked about this. The, the AMI update, I mean, this Itron 10 three module, is this something we discovered?
Maybe Robert comes up, but as you've mentioned, that's a, a, a system for all the CAM3s across the, the country. And so I think some of our security checks raised some questions about if they brought it first, they, they haven't delivered them, Robert.
Councilman Carbon, Mr. Pearson's correct, is that it was, it wasn't just us. I mean, we noted some things, but we couldn't process that out. That's what the Itrons IT department, their computer system, when we started having some issues. But they were also having them industry wide. So it was just one component of it that we were able to bring some information to them.
Is this causing the, the delay in the AMI project?
It's causing a delay with regards to putting the CGRs up. I mean, we're still moving the meters forward. They'll just be moving forward in a drive-by continuation read. But as soon as we can start getting units up in the air, then we'll start moving with our network.
Okay. And I assume there's no punitive damages or anything?
Oh, there's, there's, there is punitive damages at $300 a day and they are in liquidated damages right now and they are aware of that.
Okay. All right. Wish it was three grand a day, but 300 will help a little bit. In, in terms of, I guess on slide 13, when we talk about true ups, have we done that true up calculation for any accounts yet?
Yes, we've had one customer request and we've accommodated that response.
Any, do you recall the magnitude of that?
Oh, I would have to check. I mean, it's equivalent to two bills and it really just the next two bills. I, I can't give you a number offhand.
I think it's $172 total for that entire bill.
So, I mean, it, it could be as, as simple as two times your last bill is roughly what you, what's in arrears. I mean, not to oversimplify it, but that, that's what we're looking at, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. You, you, so this 3230, the 73 days that were out, what, what are we at on that, that billing gap? Where, where are we in, in arrears right now? In terms of dollars?
Oh.
Yeah, I don't think we have the dollar amount offhand right now. I think the last time we did it was several months ago and it was around eight million. But we'd have to rerun that calculation. It takes some time, but it's doable.
Okay. I mean, I guess any updates we have going forward, I think that's, that's a great number to know, kind of what that, what that gap is from a, a, an accrual standpoint. So it was eight million now. So I mean, it's, it's excess of eight million. And then you, you alluded to it earlier, we did have some issues, I guess, that were shared with us about three inch meters. And those have been resolved. Are there any other issues that we see behind the scenes that are bubbling up? Or a, a, anything else going on that we need to share with both council and the public?
Not, not at this time, no.
Yeah, all right. That's all I have right now, Mayor.
This is Councilman Little. I just want to kind of forewarn you guys. We just got a water bill that was over four times higher than our average. You're probably going to get a call from my wife and she's not nice like me.
Councilman Little, ask her to call me personally. I'll be happy to look at the unbilled usage. And then also we'll pull a, what we call a meter profile that will look at the last 40 days of usage and look at their hourly and their daily usage. And we'll be able to do a, a water analysis or usage analysis on it. So I'll be happy to take a look at that. Ask her to contact me personally.
I appreciate that.
I mean, to, to follow up, are we doing anything proactively like that one where the lady went from 3,300 gallons to a million gallons a month? Seems like as any type of quick analysis and even on, on Councilman Little's bill. If, if the usage exceeds, you know, a two, 300% of prior month, that it gets flagged to look at. Are, are we doing any, is the system doing anything like that to kick those out so that we're, we're heading off these issues?
If, if I could all start, you know, that one was because they, when they did the bill, that, that we knocked and said, hey, you got an issue. And that particular customer had a plumbing issue resolved on their side, which is part of the reduction. That's part of the process. They had to prove that they fixed their problem. And it was on the order of magnitude, like nearly $5,000 in plumbing work. So it was proactive. And when the AMI is fully up, it'll be even better, more timely. Because, you know, that's, that's a real issue. There's no doubt about that, that we, we pull the information for the bills. And it's, as we recognize altogether, that's part of the problem. It's months after the fact. So it'll get, that'll, that'll improve over the years. The timing, well, it was proactive.
You have a question or comment here at this point?
Uh, yeah, I just have a few. On the true up payment process, you said we've only had one individual that has requested that. How are we treating that? Are we, are, if somebody comes and wants to pay a, a quote true up amount? Are we just treating that as a credit to the bill, to their bill? And in each subsequent cycle, we're diminishing their next bill by a certain amount or they're just not getting billed for a couple of months?
That's exactly right. So, so what will happen is if they, they, so first off, you know, in, in the template that we send out, it says at the bottom it's not an invoice. But should they choose to come in and pay that amount, just, you know, it's a credit on the account and then it gets applied, it'll be their next two bills. And then after those two bills, they'll get their standard bill going forward. There's just a credit on the account.
So that's how we true that up to the 3230 plan is they get a credit for two months and then they get into a, a normal, normal bill cycle. So, I mean, by, by quote truing things up, they're just paying in advance by a couple of months, but they'll still be on the same billing cycle as everybody else.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Look, I, I appreciate us doing that. And I think that that's a probably a good halfway point to the, for the, those that have discussed. I think that very many more of those. I'd like this, I'd like to get an update maybe in the next quarter about how many of those requests we've processed. I think possibly the consultant will look at this, but one of the other issues that we've had is concerns about the in-city transfers and what we're doing with security deposits. So I'd like us to look at that. You know, if somebody's moving from one part of Pearland to another part of Pearland, I don't see that there's value in us charging them for a new deposit. That seems to be our current, our current policy unless we've revisited that in the last few months. Also, I heard from at least one individual that was divorced and that when they, in transferring over the account from her husband's name over to her name, there was a request for a new deposit. So I'd like us to try and fix that from a customer service standpoint. There's really just not, not much value in doing that.
President, that's another one of those things that, you know, longstanding and we're, we agree and that's why it's being adapted. So.
No, and I, I appreciate that. I, I kind of wanted to just bring it up to reiterate. I know Clay, you and I've had that, had a conversation about that in the past. But again, just to reiterate, there, there's a lot of these kind of significant, significant issues with respect to policy, but minor with respect to the overall function of the department that I think we need the consultant to go through and review. Because the, because they don't come up all that often or they're pretty rare. And we want to fix in, in large order, the customer service issues that we've had in the department. You know, all of these particular negative reactions we have that really don't make a whole lot of sense. We need that, I think we really do need the consultant that can spend time reviewing nothing but the policy while they're not operating the department to go through all these things. So I really said that to kind of reiterate, we, we do, we do need the consultant to help us to improve or at least to help us feel comfortable. We've improved comprehensively. So with respect to the delinquency, just help me to understand the order of magnitude of where we are with the 900 and plus thousand. On an average, just guessing, I don't expect you to give me an exact number. But what value do we normally hold in delinquency from month to month? Prior to us deciding not to go after the delinquents, the delinquent customers through the last several months? John, you're muted.
I thought I was talking with my hand. Sorry.
It's all right.
That's right. So I, I would point for the moment to answer your question, February 20 here, that's 7:56. But we'll follow up and give you more of a longer average over, over a, a longer period of time to give you a better idea.
Uh, yeah, that would be helpful because I mean, it is, it, it is a little difficult to understand, hey, it's 974,000 over the last few months. Is that just an uptick of two, 220,000 over what we normally see? So while it is, while it is an increase programmatically, it's not really affecting our system by a significant amount. So we can make better decisions. If, if we, if we're normally like at 100,000 and now we're nearly a million. I think my reaction to what our policy changes need to be would be a little different than, hey, we're, we're up about 20%. And we account, we credit that solely to not trying to go after, go after the, the delinquent account holders aggressively. I, I would like us to, I, I know that you specifically asked for guidance. Personally, I would like us to reinstate the delinquents, the delinquency process as we had prior to February. But with as much of a customer service service approach as we can, if we, if there's an error, we err on the side of the customer as best we can. And I, I appreciate we're probably going to get taken advantage of a little bit throughout this process. But, you know, if they've got, if they got a fairly good excuse and we can waive fees. if they got a fairly good excuse and we can waive fees, um, you know, I'd like to try and take as, uh, take them, uh, take the information they're providing them on face and as opposed to trying to put them through a, um, a difficulty of them trying to provide us proof that what they're telling us is true, um, i- if that kind of makes sense, a- at least until, uh, feel like we're, we're really on track.
So remember, if I could, I think what you said in, in so many words was exactly what the idea is, but we need, uh, really think we need to get after that to, uh, start to ma- have those conversations and, uh, uh, start to make the changes.
Yeah, I mean, especially now, we, we know that we're going to have some people who are laid off because of the economy. Um, you know, I would hate for them to be facing getting their water bill cut off. A- and then we put them through a bureaucratic process of, well, get, give me a letter from your own or from your former boss that said that they laid you off or, uh, something silly like that. I mean, if they, if they tell us it's, it's happening, let's just take them at their word. Um, and then try and move on from there and work with them until we deem it's clearly not appropriate or they're clearly taking advantage of us. Um, and then, uh, Robert, with respect to the meter reads in the future, um, just so I can get my head wrapped around where we are and where we're going to be. Um, so right now we, even with the new AMI meters, even though, uh, we don't have them all fully implemented, so we're still doing drive-by meter reads. But once we get, um, once we get the system fully implemented, we will no longer require any drive-by meter reads other than for the meters that are not providing, uh, a read back to, um, uh, back to its home base.
Uh, you are correct, Councilman Perez. Once we go fully implemented on the AMI, everything can be done through our network. And then anything associated where if it doesn't read or doesn't connect, then of course during that time we would, uh, get that notification. And if necessary, send the, the crews out or the meter readers out with the drive-by unit to wake them up.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to make sure that was clear. Alright, that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Good. Did you have a comment by council? We've got, we have a little work to do yet. We have a motion second on the floor, Madam Secretary.
Actually, Mayor, this is the discussion item. So the next one, someone to introduce would be the resolution. That's right.
But it, uh, I'm gonna put, uh, put Perez to work. He was asking some questions. I'll let that put in form of, um, item six on our agenda.
Uh, consideration of possible action resolution number R twenty twenty dash one four nine seven.
Hernandez.
We're in discussion, staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, so as was described, uh, in detail, uh, we've gone through a process to, uh, uh, ask somebody to come in with expertise and, uh, give us some fresh eyes and, uh, the best, uh, uh, thinking of, of today's standards, uh, for our U, our very extensive, uh, UB process and systems. Uh, got in several proposals, made proposals were scored, interviewed with firms and the recommendations to go with Raftellus, uh, and for the ninety-eight thousand dollar work and that's going to take about four months to, to go through and get a report back.
Based on staff report?
Yes, sir.
There are none, uh, Madam Secretary.
Mayor, Mayor, if I can jump in, uh, uh, just a couple of comments. Um, as I've shared with, uh, with, with Clay, uh, this was an eye-opening process for me going through the RFP, um, and kind of this whole bidding and, and evaluation process. Um, so I certainly appreciate all the time that staff spends through all this. Um, I, I guess my one hesitation that, that I voiced during the, the bid process is, um, Raftellus, the, the recommended, um, the recommended consultant is, is what currently in the city now doing the, the model for the new impact fee. And so I guess my, my hesitation is they've been fairly familiar with, um, with our process and staff and, and everything in the past. And again, it's a little different, but with twenty twenty hindsight, if they've been in there before, it should have, would have been really nice if they would have jumped over and said, hey, um, not every month has twenty-eight days. Um, so I, I guess I, I respect the process and the scoring, but that was probably the biggest knock I had against them is, um, they have been in, they're, they're familiar with the city, which I guess is good and bad. If we're looking for a fresh set of eyes, is this, um, is this the fresh set we're really looking for? Um, but that, that being said, I mean, the process went through and came up with this, them as the recommended, uh, contract. Uh, I don't know. Do, do we have, uh, a representative that can address that?
From our team or?
Uh, from Raftellus. Or our team, anybody?
John, John or John, you want to talk about that or?
So, uh, let me be crystal clear. I was not involved in the evaluation process whatsoever. There were five member team. They were three staff members and two council members. The two council members were of the audit committee. Uh, there was a, an evaluation, a score set for each response. Uh, there were ten total people that bid on the project, ten total firms. The top four were brought in and then the scoring was provided by everybody on the team. The one thing I will say about Raftellus and what they've done previously for the city, it was their scope of work did not have anything to do with billing. Their scope of work was simply a calculation of a rate model and that's what they did. They did not have the detail related to the billing. They only had the numbers that were provided. So it was a completely separate scope of work, uh, for what they were doing. But again, I'm going to rely on the two council members who were part of that process to, you know, uh, I think staff will go with whoever you all believe is the most qualified firm and this is the one that showed out to be the most qualified.
I would just say that, you know, uh, going through a, um, an impact fee model, it has, um, very little to do with the, uh, the billing process. Uh, I don't think one really interferes with the other. So I'd be comfortable, um, uh, having, having these guys, uh, review with a fresh set of eyes. I, I, I don't think that what they've done in the past is really going to, um, significantly affect what they're going to find now.
Any other counsel comment on this item?
Mayor, I have, uh, I have just a couple of questions. Uh, first of all, you know, a few months ago, we were, the council was asked to provide any feedback on the RFP that was going out. Um, and I, I got answers back to most of my questions, but just wanted to follow up on a couple of those now. Uh, the first is, as I've said many times, as we've been talking about tonight, we're really trying to fix two things here, both the broken water billing issue, but also the broken public trust. And so I think reading the, uh, reading the project approach that's listed here, I think we do a really good job of fixing the broken water billing thing. Uh, and I, I want to ensure we're doing the same on the public trust side. So something I asked about previously and want to confirm, so beginning is, uh, validating the size of the amount that is owed. Uh, that's why, uh, again, I was asked about tonight, um, a- and what we said, you know, the last time we checked, it was about eight million dollars, but I think, uh, dating that amount and also a breakout of how it's categorized. It's like, also was mentioned, we have, uh, the best water billing system in America, it has a twelve to fourteen day gap. And so there's going to be an amount in arrears. Some component of that eight million dollars should be in arrears. So that's not really an overage. So I guess it would be, you know, what is the amount that should be there? What is the amount that is an overage as a result of policy? Uh, and then what is, if any, is from something else? Uh, I, I didn't see that in this project approach under the deliverables. So I just wanted to make sure that was still going to be something that we would get through this process.
The answer to your question is yes, that'll be something that they will be directed to provide. Uh, Councilmember Carbone, I believe that was discussed, um, during the process with the various firms. I don't know if you or Councilmember Little want to, uh, address that.
Yeah, I mean, we, we discussed it, um, at length and I think that was going to be done kind of at the, the outset of the beginning of engagement is, is kind of trying to quantify that. And I mean, further that, that's a financial reporting, uh, item that, that we should be able to quantify in-house and then have them kind of test our assumptions versus, uh, waiting for them to come back. So I guess I would ask staff, if they can get us that, that number, I mean, I, I would have hoped to have it at this, this meeting, but if they can get us a number and then, uh, and then, you know, once this consultant comes on board, they can, they can kind of audit that or, or make sure that that's a solid accrual. Um, along the same lines, I mean, we do have a, a, a financial statement audit coming up that will be looking at that exact accrual as well that was discussed in the audit committee meeting. So, um, yeah, I think we're going to be looking at it from several different angles, all looking at that same accrual.
Yeah, that, that's good. And I, uh, I wouldn't mind seeing that from staff separately. I think just the issue is the, um, the, the commentary of which, you know, to be very clear, I think has been unfounded, but just the idea that, you know, maybe this money is going somewhere else or that there's any kind of untoward behavior. And so I just think having an independent, uh, expert validate, um, validate where the money is, uh, would be useful for public trust purposes. Um, the other thing I wanted to follow up on, just that I didn't see in the deliverables that, I know they're going to be, uh, that they would be evaluating staffing and, uh, you know, industry, what the, uh, general standards are for spans and controls. Um, but I just wanted to confirm that they would specifically, uh, be evaluating, you know, I mean, that's kind of big picture, like a spans and controls analysis. But I'm thinking in terms of, we have this big new change that's in the works with AMI. Uh, could we specifically have some kind of discussion, uh, about what the implications of that are in terms of staffing? Uh, AMI, of course, being a, a system that automates a lot of work. Uh, could we just see a little bit? I, I just kind of specifically apart from maybe the big picture, how does our, you know, number of, uh, employees per population, how does that compare to another city? I kind of want to know specifically for our example, how the AMI implementation might affect staffing levels or, or should it affect staffing levels?
W- we can definitely do that. All of the consultants were made aware that, um, we were moving from AMR to AMI and that that there were to do an evaluation of the billing system and the staffing for both of those. So, uh, that's something we can ask them to do directly or specifically.
Awesome. And then just the, the last question after hearing the, uh, the comments from Member Carbone, uh, you know, we see and Councilmember Little, having served on this committee, uh, I guess I would just ask if, if those hesitations are, uh, severe enough for you to not support this selection? And if so, who would be the other vendor having sat in on those, uh, those interviews and that discussion? What do you recommend or, uh, with the explanation that was provided, uh, are, are you comfortable with Raftellus as the pick?
I can hesitantly be comfortable with the decision that was made. I mean, second place, I mean, it's in the packet. Uh, I think it was very done. Uh, they, they were good. They, they had, they had issues as well. Um, but, um, I mean, I sat through the process. It's a thorough process and I will respect the process. And I, 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 with staff's further, um, comments as well as Councilman Perez, I, I think I can, I can be comfortable.
Appreciate it.
Any other good questions? I'm, uh, I think we're running out of good questions and good, and some great answers. And, uh, Madam Secretary, it sounds like we have a motion second on the floor here.
Member Perez?
Aye.
Owens? Member Orlando?
Aye.
Member Carbone? Member Little? Member Little?
Need to circle back on him.
Okay, I do not see Member Little.
There he is right there.
Okay, Member Little? Okay, I will talk back to Member Little. Member Hernandez?
Aye.
Member Moore?
Aye.
Member Little?
Joshua, can you see if you can? It shows that he's unmuted. Can you see if you can help him out?
Uh, yes, I, I'm, I'm trying to do the same. Uh, he, he is unmuted. Member Little, can you hear us now? And just one second, let me try something.
Well, the motion is passed with his vote or not. So do we want to just consider him out of the chamber and move on?
Councilman Little, can you hear us? He, he's, he's muting and unmuting, but, um,
He's unmuted.
Doesn't appear to have an impact on microphone.
Attorney Colker, do you recommend that we, um, we not capture the vote of, of, uh, Member Little and capture, um, the approved, um, motions or actions?
Okay. That's up to the mayor at this point in time. He, he can, uh, go ahead and, uh, uh, we can go ahead and take action with a six to zero vote with, with one, uh, no vote, uh, not a no vote, but one non-vote, uh, from, uh, Councilmember Little, since we cannot hear him and our charter does require that it be a record vote that could be heard. And so, uh, absent that, we would have to proceed without him participating.
Okay, we'll treat, we'll treat it as, we'll treat it as a, um, uh, an absentee at this point.
Okay, the motion passes six to zero to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty dash one four nine.
And, uh, David was trying to, uh, indicate here that he's, uh, trying to tune back into us. So, uh, maybe Dan can help us out on that somewhere. Let's move into our agenda though, uh, uh, item number seven and, uh, let me, I want to head back over to you to kind of get the franked up.
Thank you, Mayor. So, uh, we've been, uh, in addition to, to, uh, dealing with, uh, COVID and, uh, uh, now hurricanes, uh, staff's been very diligent in working on, uh, budget follow-ups. We had a meeting just last week and turned around a number of questions council had, uh, and we grouped those. We had a good discussion last time and got consensus on a, a number of items. Um, so in that same spirit, um, if we get the, uh, PowerPoint up, please. So the, uh, this is our third budget, formal budget discussion. Again, uh, councils, uh, uh, we made presentation, but councils had the documents and, uh, given us, uh, numerous questions, which we've done our best to follow up on. And, uh, we will have a public hearing on the budget, uh, a week from tonight on, uh, the thirty-first. And then when September, we move into the, uh, readings on the various required parts of the budget. Next. So, uh, uh, this is the, the budget discussion, what you have in there, where there's something like fifty-five questions. Uh, we've organized them again into three sections, just to categorize and keep that, uh, uh, going. And if council will allow, we'd like to, uh, continue with that section of, uh, items that were brought up and bring consensus and, and see if there's a desire to have changed, uh, further into the recommendations. So next. John, do you want to take this?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Now, good evening again, Mayor Council. Pleasure to be here with you tonight. So, um, I, I think tonight we're going to look to cover pretty much, uh, the same framework that we operated from in the last budget discussion. Uh, we, we did attach a, a We we did attach a memorandum to tonight's agenda that covers really three groups of things. There are some additional sections, just summarizing some actions that were already taken. But, you know, the three that that follow up on requests from city council, first being updates to the the proposed budget. Next made changes made, section number one, I should say, are items mentioned by one or more city council members that would require a consensus to change. So not formal action items, but something we would need agreement on by a majority of council before we proceed with it. Second, changes made to the proposed budget. And then third, information requests that came through that aren't necessarily action items or that required a change. Any update would be a consensus of council required. Before we get into the discussion items or the the section number one, kind of meaty potential update items, I do want to point out some changes that were made to the general fund budget, all of these that resulted in a change to the bottom line. I'm sorry, these changes were both on the revenue and expenditure side here. And this is in the packet for you to explore a little further. But I wanted to point out in FY 20, that being this current fiscal year, we are projecting a change to our TERS tax increment refinancing zone admin fee. We worked with accounting and a third party to the third party being the TERS the TERS staff to look at that 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 fee, excuse me, to take a look at that fee and make sure it was being assessed properly. This is about a $1.3 million increase in in fiscal year 2020. So you can see that flows down to the fund balance. And so the the starting position for FY 21 is higher now than it was in the proposed budget just a few weeks ago. Next on the FY 21 column, you can see there are a few changes in the revenue. We closed the month of month of May. We closed the month of July just last week. And after we closed that month, we put out the variance report as we normally do. And then we dug into the details of, you know, hey, does this change any of our assumptions? I think we all know that we are in a very elastic situation, one that one that's changing rapidly with with COVID-19 and our economic factors that filter down into our revenue. So we updated our our revenue based on what we saw in July, informing the trends that we thought we'd seen. Big picture, you know, we've been projecting a drop in revenue in things like sales tax, things like licenses and permits. That just has not come through. We've shared out sales tax revenue in in a separate individual report, but we're seeing positive growth and positive growth that was higher than pre-COVID in the months since since COVID or the last two months at least. On on the licenses and permits, we had our best month this last month since, I believe it was 2018. And so we're still seeing this activity come through, which is contrary to our projections. So we wanted to update our 21 revenue to make sure that we were more in line with that new information because we're all learning here with the new new economy that we're living in. And then on the expenditure side, really two major things changed here. First, we allocated out the cost of living adjustment. So it's across all the functions. We originally had that built into general government and that showed a big spike. So we took that and we spread it out across all the functions here. So you're a little bit better picture of what that looks like. And then second, adding streets and sidewalks, the request was made and consensus of council gave direction to get streets to $1 million flat for this fiscal year. We did some moving around. We realized some savings once we allocated the COA and found some savings in other places, plus the revenue changes, gave more than enough resources to make that happen. So that all rolls down to the bottom line. This is still a balanced budget. You can see that $695,000 is about 300,000 more than was in there in the initial, excuse me, proposed budget. So we're still adding to that fund balance, just as we have. Call your attention to the the bottom portion here that really talks about what does that mean in terms of percentages? But we're staying flat at 24% of fund balance as a percentage of expenditures and total days of expenditures. You know, we talked about getting to 90. This this brings us to 86 in in fiscal year 2021. So important context as we move into the decision making process, wanted to make sure you were aware of this. Like I said, this is in the write up and all those changes are covered in different sections, but wanted to call some attention to that. So next, I'm going to hand this back to Mr. Pearson here. But we can walk through these similar to the way we did last time, where we just do them one at a time and make a decision. We can move forward.
Hey, John, can you go back one slide, please?
Yes, sir.
So just to reemphasize, make clear the charges for services, that the the large positive change. You know, there's other positive changes in here from a revenue standpoint, but the one for that TERS admin fee was a recalculation using, you know, the accurate information. It's complicated in terms of numbers we were given for the percentage, but that's a one time positive. Is that right, John?
That that is right. On the the change in FY 21, that was just as we noted in the transmittal letter when we delivered the budget that that was going to happen. And I think the change was $75,000 and was unrelated to the prior year.
Right, but the 20 was the larger amount. That was the one time true up, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right, thanks. So then the next slide, these are the topics that we gleaned from last time where there's questions asking and if council indulge, I'll try to lead us through or walk you through that to get that consensus, make sure we have everybody participate. And so we have some clear consensus so we can get things settled and move ahead with the council's concurrence. So the first one was about a potential elimination of fine for the pet registration non compliance. You know, this is something not meant to be punitive, but it's meant to help cover costs. It's meant to encourage, you know, doing the right thing for getting the records and the rabies and et cetera, et cetera. So but there is low compliance. It's always a challenge everywhere. And so there was a suggestion of revising that. And there's a larger review of of the the animal services processes and fines and financials. So if I could, maybe member Orlando, you'd introduce this, for lack of a better word.
Yeah, Chris Clay. So most people probably don't even realize that Pearland does require you to annually register your pets. But every year you're supposed to set a reminder, then fill out a form again, pay the fee, mail it back in and submit your registration each year to the city. Aren't doing that. People don't do that. So the compliance reporting part packet here is at about 5%. And as Clay kind of alluded to, there's a major effort right now underway to improve animal control that I I think doesn't get enough credit. So major, major kudos and major props to John Fisher, who leads up the shelter over there and Assistant Chief Randall and the entire team at the shelter and the board that we appoint to manage that. But but they're working on some really great stuff that we got a little bit of a preview of in our Thursday packet that showed how dramatically up live release rates are in addition to other metrics. And they're planning this big package for us that's going to come before us in January. And one of those things or sometime at the beginning of next year, and it's my understanding that one of those things is going to be around replacing this broken policy, which has led to, you know, 5% of people following this requirement that we have. First of all, I don't think it should be every year, but regardless, they're they're working on that and working hard on that. And I don't want to preempt what they're doing. In the meantime, in the meantime, all of this great work that we're doing, all this effort to rebuild public confidence and animal control, we are systematically creating these negative interactions. So your dog gets out and then they they identify who the owner is. They look at the caller, they call you. And then, you know, probably a 95% chance, you're not registered. So you get your dog back and or your cat back and you're all excited about it. And then it's like, hey, you're not following this this rule that nobody you probably haven't heard of, that nobody follows. And then, you know, later you get a letter like, hey, pay this thing. And if you don't, then you get a fine from 135 to $500, plus you have to pay your court costs. And so we're doing all this great work, but then creating these negative impressions to enforce something that people don't do. So just, I mean, to wrap it up, maybe that's a discussion in January when we see these proposals, whether or not the government even should be in the business of making folks annually register their pets. But right now with the budget, we have the opportunity to assess fines and we have the chance to stop enforcing this failed policy that really is counterproductive towards our larger goals of increasing the the trust and cooperation in in the animal shelter and the animal control department. And and we stop doing that until a better system is worked out. So I brought this to the table for consideration.
So if I could restate for the consensus, it would your suggestion would be to remove from the non-development fees, the a non-compliance pet registration fee. Is that that what you're saying, asking for?
I believe so. And there was a statement that the registration fee defers the cost. I wouldn't be saying to get rid of the registration fee. I'd be saying to get rid of the fine for if you don't end up sending in your registration.
Got it. So again, trying to get everybody to participate and give us the feedback so we can get consensus. Member Owens, anything on that particular item of eliminating that fee?
Which one was that?
The the pet registration, the penalty for non-compliance with if we catch it. Would you be open to, do you want to remove that until at least we get this comprehensive review? Just take that off the books for a penalty? Is that confirmation? You go along with that or?
I can just give a witty impression if you want.
That was not my item on there, the elimination of the fee. Yeah.
Okay. Member Perez?
What kind of value were we looking at annually? What's the line item for this?
I think it was, was it 20 or something, John? It was?
Around 20,000.
Yeah, go away.
Member Hernandez?
Yeah, I I I'm supportive of that. I don't I don't think it's something necessary. We need to be bothering people to to register their animals. I mean, it's I didn't know about it until I got involved in city government. So I can see where other people wouldn't. And I just don't, you know, I don't think we need to be penalizing people for that right now.
Member Moore?
Yeah, I agree. We could we can eliminate that for now.
Member Carbone?
Yep, I'm good. Look forward to the discussion in January.
Yep, member Little, member Mayor Portem Little, I'm sorry.
Hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'm okay with eliminating it.
Great. All right. So that was easy. Next one was the Parks and Recreation. There's a lot of obvious, you know, questions and understand the the background for that. We did try to break down and explain, you know, some of the basis for that, that, you know, we we are not expecting that, you know, COVID impacts all the programs as they would for the entire fiscal year upcoming. That's one point. Another one is that there's a number much work that's continuing, both for maintenance of the parks and and facilities. And then also we are doing things differently. The nap center may be closed, but they are continuing to offer food programs and other outreach with the staff there. And the other part is, you know, just as a practical matter, there's revenues that go with that and expenditure. So if it doesn't continue, it's not those monies won't get spent. So, you know, there there's an offset. It's not like a big windfall of savings by taking that out and then trying to restart that sometime during the year. So, you know, that's our rationale, but obviously welcoming feedback or questions on the Parks and Recreation budget piece of that, you know, as relates to the COVID world and going forward as we in the next month. So, member Little, I don't know if you wouldn't mind starting up any reactions or things you'd want to see different in the from the budget recommended?
Well, what what cuts the staff recommending that Parks and Recreation can live with?
So at this time, did any of the variable costs or cuts would be, you know, they they they're going to answer themselves. We're going to have, you know, less if if there were programs that don't happen, you know, there's offsetting revenue and and we don't incur all those costs. So there's not a good place for, you know, just cutting it without, you know, a negative impact. So it was more like background, if I could, to understand that.
Well, the the big unknown is when we're going to be free of this COVID-19 virus. And, you know, the Parks and Recreation Department can come back to operating on under normal condition. And, you know, without having a glass ball, it's it's hard to say what's going to happen in Parks and Recreation.
Yeah.
If we cut things and then the virus has gone around the first of the year, then we're going to have a lot of unbudgeted expenses if we want to resume normal operation.
Right. And that was part of the argument too, or thought is that, you know, if as things ease, it won't be a, you know, magically it goes away one day, you know, we'll be starting things up generally and trying to avoid, you know, budgetary issues and having to come back for a bunch of amendments as we go along. So. So.
Clay, when would we expect the first mid-year review of the budget to happen? It's typically April, right? If I remember correctly?
So two things, we do a reconciliation real quick afterwards where we do carryovers. So, John, is that in November, Thanksgiving time, second of November?
Late November, early December.
Yeah, I'm I'm thinking more on the the latter part of the first quarter or early second quarter next year. We we typically do a a review of the budget around that time, correct?
Right. So you get your monthly reports, obviously, and what kinds of inputs. But that you're right, that that budget amendment number one, number two, we brought to you in June. It seems like feels like May, June?
So I think I'm, the problem is is that nobody really knows what we're going to need for Parks and Rec. And I'm perfectly fine with us using the budgetary number we have as as a placeholder, particularly when it associates with a more than two cent tax reduction, property tax reduction. But what I would say is maybe to get to honor the request and the concern when we do the budget amendment one in the latter part of the first or early part of the second quarter next year. Let's have a line item where at least discuss what are we seeing in Parks and Rec at that point? You know, maybe by that point, there will be a vaccine and everybody's out back to back to using public facilities. And we really still need the money. If not, then we can discuss what do we want to do with the holdover? Do we want to just put it into put it into fund balance and then have that offset costs for the following budget year? Or do we want to allocate it somewhere else? Because I just don't, there's there's no way to really predict what we're going to need right now. It's a valid concern, but I'm I'm perfectly happy waiting till the first budget amendment before we where we know with more information before we get make any kind of drastic changes where we defund it and then we go into the April and it's like, well, we don't have any money to do any of our parks, people are asking for asking us for.
Member Orlando?
Yeah, I just had a quick question. I couldn't find it here quickly, but it kind of an insight that I got from the answer to this was that is it staff's suggestion that park attendance is actually increasing during this? Like some function of people staying home a lot and wanting to get outside?
Right. So that that was written there and I asked him to quantify that, you know, with parking numbers or something. But, you know, just anecdotally, I mean, everybody can come up with their own anecdotes. But, you know, the the staff is seeing from, you know, the activity, the the garbage is put there, whatever. You know, the 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 spaces, you know, Centennial Park, you mentioned last time, every time I go by there in the mornings, tons of people out walking. So those kinds of things. I mean, you may not be able to use all the playgrounds or splash pad quite yet in the rec center, obviously. But all those things were, you know, optimistic that, you know, we can ease back into that. There's still a lot of cases, but, you know, I think most of the thinking is our last couple of weeks, you know, the new case count and et cetera is stabilized, for lack of a better word, you know, we just got to see. So.
Yeah, I was just saying that was unexpected to me. And I know it mentioned in the memo that in the future there'd be some kind of quantification. So would love to see that, but that made me feel good that it it sounds like some people are at least getting some use out of that. So I would like to follow up there, but that's kind of an unexpected positive development. So that's good. I I I think that the concern is mostly addressed by what member Perez said, by revising it mid-year. Again, not to beat on this drum too many times, but it again, kind of speaks to me to one of the advantages of an activity based costing, especially for item C here, the special events where you could just see, you know, this is the date that we have this thing scheduled for. This is the recurring activity. Again, know that that's in the works. You know, it's hard, but just wanted to call that out. But largely think that member Perez has the right approach and I'm comfortable with that.
Member Carbone, I think you had touched on this last time, too.
Yeah, I guess my my hesitation would be we get to mid-year, everything's still locked down, but yet we're still right in line with budget. but yet we're still right in line with budget. Right. I mean, that's.
So the, the, the challenge would be is like, there's not, there's not a whole lot. What we're trying to say there is that, you know, some things, I mean, we're optimistic about the rec center, that we can restore that towards, uh, you know, what we had, you know, four weeks ago, six weeks ago, not full open, but others. So, um, but there's not a lot of like marginal costs that can just be cut at this point without, you know, uh, without all these other impacts. So that's, that's the point.
Yeah.
So anything you want to suggest or ask for a change from the recommended?
Um, not, not now. I think I can get there.
Got you. Number more?
No, not right now. Um, you know, just the uncertainty of when things are going to open back up again. Um, just don't know, but I mean, I, I think it's definitely worth looking at, you know, mid-year to see where we're at. Um, but I mean, we're, we're going to have cost savings just because a lot of things aren't open or we're not able to do special events or things like that. So I, I think we should look at it further down the line though.
Got you. Member Hernandez?
I think, uh, member Perez hit it pretty well for me as well. I, I, I would agree with most everything that he said, except that if somebody doesn't pick up that dead tree at the J hack, I'm going to come back with a 50% cut across the board. So please somebody pick up that one dead tree. It's been driving me crazy.
Not going to touch that one. Okay. Um, I think we're, we're.
Bring that chainsaw and we could just.
I'll be happy to do it myself. Um, yeah, no, I, I do think I have seen a lot of people at the parks though. So I mean, people are using the parks, they're, they're showing up. I mean, it's obvious that there's still going to be maintenance costs and things like that. So, um, I think it's worth to, you know, it's, it's in the budget now, baked in. We don't have to use it. I think that's an important point that people that are listening, you have to understand is that we're not saying all the money that's in the budget is going to be spent. Um, you know, if there are ways that it can be reduced, we can do that. And then, you know, look at moving that money maybe to future years and potentially impact the tax rate in future years, you know, in a, in a, a positive way, I think. Um, so, I mean, that's, that's what we're discussing here, I think, for people listening. Um, there may be a little bit of confusion about that, but people are using the parks and I get what you're saying, Clay. I think that, that's a good point that, you know, it's kind of these marginal costs are difficult to quantify right now. So a lot of uncertainty, but I'm.
So you said that in almost as many words as member Perez, so it's impressive.
Uh, I'm learning.
Yeah. Member Owens, uh, uh, it seems like we got a good consensus, but other thoughts on the parks budget item B there?
You know, Clay, I don't know. You know, the, the thing about it, you know, whatever comes in the budget, comes, um, you know, in October, December and January or whatever, there's not going to be a, you know, switch flip out there that says we'll go back 14 months and everything's going to be hunkadory till the, the way it was previously. It's not, it's not going to happen even into the, the budget process. You know, people are looking at it and says, you know, we, we, we're going to go through a, a recession greater than what it was in 2008. Even our own staff is saying that. Um, you know, it, it, it's, it's kind of like a roll of the dice, what's going to happen, to be quite honest with you, uh, on there that, uh, you know, do we leave the money in the budget for these things and, and are, are not? Do we come in three months later and allow for those budget dollars to be allocated somewhere else within, uh, within the department? Or what, you know, that department or other departments? Um, I think, you know, we need to look at it realistically. Are we going to be in a position to where what we have in the budget now, we're going to be able to use, spend it, you know, as it is? I don't really think so, you know, that, that's going to happen, um, through that. Um, I don't see anybody out, you know, right now walking in the trails or what? I go down Pearland Parkway every day to the new big one that we put through there on, on green tea. And I'll see one car there, uh, one individual's walking that trail. But, you know, uh, I see a lot of people out riding bicycles though, so maybe they're doing it on bicycles. I don't know. But I, I think, you know, on the events and stuff, I think you're not going to have them. You're not going to have them for a while and, and things are not going to happen right after the first year, like it was, you know, like I say, 14 months ago. It's going to be different things coming up and it's a whole different lifestyle of what we're going to do.
So if I could, special events is a separate item, but, uh, as far as Parks, Parks and Rec, I mean, um, appreciate the, the feedback or thoughts, but the reality is too, that the, the revenue is, uh, through four months of this pandemic is, uh, as good or better than anticipated. Uh, money that doesn't need to be spent, won't get spent. The proof is, uh, been shown here year over year in terms of the expenditures below. And, uh, you know, as you said, this won't be magic like October 1, a, 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 a flip gets switched, uh, switch gets flipped. But, um, you know, there are things that are going to come back and, and gradually, and, and that's what this budget allows, so. So item C was on the special events and likewise, um, you know, frankly, looking at our write-up is a little general, but I think it was a general inquiry, you know, special events is a part of the Parks and Recreation and, you know, big, uh, we didn't, we weren't able to do the Fourth of July, uh, celebration. And, uh, uh, that proved to be a good decision, you know, when we made that, it wasn't, uh, uh, you know, the same COVID situation. But, you know, that, that, uh, you know, as that, between the time when that was decided and when it happened, it was, uh, you know, things got worse for that time period. Uh, we have our big, uh, popular holiday events in December, uh, Winter Fest, those are all special events. Um, so, you know, do we want to take those out of the budget this time? Those would be things if the council desires, you know, to take those out, we, we would, we'd need to decide on fairly shortly, you know, just like with the Fourth of July for planning purposes. So, um, just to get after that special events topic in terms of changes from the recommended, uh, member Perez, anything you want to, uh, you want, any consensus or things you want to change out of that?
Uh, uh, how close to the event, uh, to the holiday event do we need to make a decision, uh, uh, whether we're going to host it or not?
I don't know, John, if you're, uh, able to answer that, or if Dr. Lee is on, either one of you can talk about that sequence.
Yeah, from an advertising and publicity standpoint, I think, uh, we would need to know by the, no later than the middle of October.
Um, my, my gut is this, if, if we feel, right now, it doesn't feel like, uh, we're on a path to be able to put on that event. So I would much rather kind of direct the funds, uh, somewhere else. But I would be willing, if other council members would be willing to, um, you know, maybe still have the funding for the event in there now and make a decision, uh, as late into the budget process as we can, maybe by the second reading. But giving direction to staff of, if we do it reallocated, where do we reallocate it to? Um, so I would say right now, well, what's, um, and I'm sorry, John, do you know offhand, what's the line item for, um, the, um, the, the tree lighting event? What, what's that value?
I, I don't know what the, the value is, but the total difference is we're talking about $21,000 versus cost and revenue, I believe. I think that's correct.
Uh, Clay, you're muted.
Chris, Chris is unmuted. So Chris, can you add some to that, please?
Yes, sir. Are you able to hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Um, Congressman Perez, what we, um, would really ask for your approval in continuing, at least with the initial holiday events, is that, uh, if you'll recall, we did have some funds that were allocated for fireworks at the Celebration of Freedom. We did opt to retain that funding and push that forward to a holiday event. What we've had the opportunity to do in anticipation of exactly what you said, um, if we are unable to have an in-person live event, the dynamics of that event are a little bit different than the Celebration of Freedom, uh, in July. So we do feel confident that we can have a socially distant compliant event in the traditional format, even if that is not the case, and for some reason numbers go nuts in a way that we don't expect, to have, um, contingency plans that we can program our holiday events. And, um, you can kind of think of Santa's Wonderland type theme, kind of a drive-through event. So we can provide a very large impact. Um, what we're working with right now is the International Festival of Events, uh, Texas Festival of Events, different partner agencies to make sure that we're providing opportunities to get the community back together in ways that we safely can. Um, so, uh, Mr. Branson was, uh, very close with the number that he provided for you. And, um, but also in alignment with what Mr. Pearson said, aside from the funds already allocated for a holiday fireworks show, if the events are unable to take place, the funds won't be expended and would go back. And a lot of the special events are, um, not a part of the general fund. They are allocated, um, to the special event fund or, um, the park donation fund, as it's sometimes called, Fund 330.
Okay, I guess, uh, my direction would be, um, if we, uh, come up some, uh, say, celebrate, uh, the holiday season, uh, either what is traditional, if, uh, we're in better, uh, we have better, uh, a, a better COVID outlook, uh, by the time we need to make that decision, or we have to modify it as necessary, I'm fine with that. Um, if, uh, if we discover or decide later that we, uh, do not hold the event, I would, I would like to allocate that money either to fund balance or to, uh, to street repair.
Yes, sir. Understood. Um, and I think we could prepare, um, well within the, the normal planning, uh, onset, uh, eight weeks roughly or so, that we could let you know if we're going to provide a quality event that, uh, administration and, um, you gentlemen would find acceptable, and then we can proceed with the event if that was still the approved direction.
You know, if, if, if an opportunity comes up to where we can have a special event, say like the, the Christmas or holidays or whatever, something like that, I think that's the serving of the people to, to be able to do that, you know, we've always had that. We've always had a large crowd to turn out. Um, personally, I would tell you, keep the damn, excuse me, keep the mud, budget in, in there. And, you know, if it's, if it's not used for that and the circumstances are that we can't have it based upon the virus or whatever, uh, then that could be a line item that could be carried over, like we do every year of carry funds forward. It's not expended on there, but, you know, for something like that on, on that for the, you know, I say for the kids or for the families or whatever during the holidays, if we're able to do that and we're able to come out of there from this, uh, virus that we're going through in this period of time and offer something in December to where people are able to come out and do something like that, I think, you know, I would say let's, let's do it. If we don't spend it and carry it over, we don't have to spend it.
So that was our thinking for the parks generally, but, um, and member Hernandez, anything on the special events side?
Um, I just need somebody from PD to arrest member Owens because he stole the words right out of my mouth. I think.
I never did that out of you.
I think keeping the, you know, the mental health of our residents kind of at the, the top of this discussion as well is really important and trying to make sure that we provide them with some type of activity, programming, something around the, the holiday season in particular, you know, for the kids. People are dealing with so much right now, having the opportunity to give them, you know, something special around the holidays, I, I think is just, that's, that's such a big part of what we were tasked to do, uh, to serve our residents. So I'm, I'm totally behind that. So thank you, member Owens, for bringing that forward. That's agreed, and, and that's exactly what we plan to do, sir. And it, it works very well. Both of you gentlemen have used the word family multiple times, and that's what's making our holiday events a possibility, is people don't tend to congregate in large sweaty masks. It's like happens in July. They tend to congregate in small family groups. Um, and as we know from the messages that have been drilled into our heads, those are about the only folks that the CDC and the state agree are folks you should be close to. So I appreciate the support and the, the direction that Mr. Pearson's office has lent us in this as well.
So member more, anything on this? And just to be clear, um, you know, the count, we're, we're talking about parts of the budget, uh, uh, the elements, uh, uh, you, uh, was talked about an activity-based, uh, you actually adopt a fun budget, uh, for each of them. And so, uh, these are elements that go into that, so we're trying to get feedback for priorities and what have you. But what you ultimately adopt will, uh, be at that fun level, like Mr. McCarter showed at the beginning. But, um, remember more, anything on special events that you wanted to say, sir?
No, I think the same thing is, uh, if we don't spend the money, we carry it over, um, that's that. I mean, we'll have more money next year to do other things.
Member Carbone? For Little? Portem Little, anything on the special events side? So, uh, I'll take this affirmation. Um, the, uh, item D Delta, uh, we talked about there, that was, uh, uh, as Mr. McCarter referenced, we were able to quote unquote solve that. Uh, you know, the revenues have continued to be strong and we had conservative estimates in there. So this relatively small amount to, uh, bring that up to the, the million dollar target that was challenged us last week was achieved. Um, I don't know, there's a, just I get consensus that, that, that we want to continue with the way that was done. Uh, member Perez, I see you.
Uh, with it, uh, I'd just like to give general direction that as we get, um, in the future, uh, as we make amendments to the, uh, uh, to the budget, I'd like to prioritize putting money into the street funding, uh, for as long as this fiscal year as we can, or put it into the fund balance. I think those are the only two things we need to deal, deal with.
Member Owens, we got, we got up to a million. I know you'd, uh, suggested giving even more, but, uh, we got the million in there.
Yeah, you know, I, we need to put something back in the street funding and all of us sit here and knows that, you know, that the dollar amount, we, we do not meet that every year, what needs to go into it. And even to the point, you know, if you go down through the city and you look at the, the roads, I mean, they're, the striping, you can't even see it anymore, uh, on there. And so, yeah, I'd love to see at least a million dollars go back in, you know, to, to the street funding. Um, we've got streets, it's not that good of shape right now. And, uh, and so anything that we can do will be a benefit for, but I, I wish it was a lot more than that. You know, we, what was it, $7 million a year? And what we should be putting it into the streets, we're going to give something back. I see that as something given back to the residents to have good streets, striped streets, own and everything else, uh, in the streets and, and, and also for the sidewalks, you know? So I, I will tell you that the, about three or four days ago, I was going down 518 and right before you get to the Dairy Queen, uh, down there that, uh, where the sidewalk plays out, there was a guy laying on the side of the road there. And what happened? He was coming in and shopping and coming up through there and fell because he'd lost, there was no sidewalk in that area. Uh, and that, you know, those things, you know, we've got to do, I don't, you know, I don't know. We had a fund set up for that years ago to do that, if people didn't want to put sidewalks and those particular errors, the funds there. But I think any amount that we can use to increase the street funding, I th- I think we need to do that, where it's a million or take some of the overage that we have, uh, in that area, I still think we need to do that too.
So the, uh, the million was the consensus from last time we got to that. Remember Hernandez on the million?
I'm comfortable with it. I'm glad y'all were able to get it up to that number. Thank you.
Number more?
Well, if my mute button will work, uh, yeah, I'm fine with that. Um, I, I just had one question. Um, if that money, extra money did not go into the streets and sidewalk fund, or the street fund, I shouldn't say, what else would it be used for?
So functionally, I mean, it's obviously up to, uh, your prioritization as the, as the body, but, uh, uh, it practically, you know, with the additional revenue that would flow to the, uh, an allocated fund balance unless it gets allocated. So that's what this is about, to allocate that, a, a bit of that.
Okay, okay.
Uh, member Carbone, million?
Yeah, I mean, it's a good start. It's helping to, uh, to clear, kind of close that gap. Uh, I hope we can get to a bigger capital project in the future as discussed last time, but for this, uh, for this budget, I think it's good.
Good man. Member, uh, member Orlando?
I'm good with it. Thank you for the, the effort.
Yep. And member Little, do we connect you up? Are you good?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
All right, uh, I had to reboot it again to get, uh, audio back. Uh, I'm okay with a million. Thank you for getting it back in there.
Yep.
Uh, Clay, while we're on the subject, just want to reiterate that, uh, for the February budget discussion, uh, I'd like to have a memo that plans out how we're going to increase this funding each year until we catch up to the, uh, four point seven, uh, minimally that we need to, to properly fund this street, uh, uh, the street maintenance program.
And, uh, uh, we'll remember, but also, uh, remind council when December, we put out a memo of, uh, topics and research areas and, uh, please, uh, all y'all participate and give us, uh, ideas for that. So, uh, the last one is, uh, professional development. Uh, council, uh, brought that up last time. Uh, we gave you the detail that was, uh, each of the departments and divisions, uh, the time before that provided the list of actual, um, uh, participation. And then in your packets, uh, page thirty seven, thirty eight and thirty nine of that, uh, budget item, uh, it, it provides the summaries. So, uh, as you would expect, uh, police and fire of the, uh, uh, amounts, it, first off, this was brought down 10% from the year prior. So there was already a quote unquote cut from that, uh, but for the upcoming FY twenty one, uh, police and fire is, uh, forty five percent, uh, human resources and includes some citywide, uh, and that was described in there is, uh, it drops down significantly to the ninety three and then on from that. So it's a combination of things, but rather than some generalities of, you know, numbers, uh, you've got the, the detail and you've got those departmental summaries, uh, but looking for consensus on, uh, some, you know, remain there, add to it or some number to, that, that the council as a body sees to, to remove there. So, uh, and I say remove, it, it'd be from the total fund and, and allocated to elsewhere. Uh, member Little, anything to add on this or say on this, sir?
Uh, yeah, I saw an email from, uh, or an ad recently. I don't know if it came through our city email or not, but it was a company that converts cities to virtual, um, development type programs rather than live. And it mentioned three cities in Houston that they had saved millions for. And I remember one of them was Austin and it might be a trend. And, and is that, is that something the city's considered?
But we, we already do, uh, much online and, uh, uh, through the great efforts of our human resources department, we have a learning management system, a new one. Uh, there was one, we've upgraded that. So that delivers some of those classes, uh, some of those you have to pay for to get them loaded up. But, uh, you know, that's one piece of all this. Um, but that wouldn't show up in, in these and that supplements, uh, this number would be different and bigger if not for what we already do there.
So what percentage of our total, um, resource training are we doing online?
I mean, it depends. I mean, we do all of our FEMA or emergency management training is, uh, provided online. Uh, we do diversity training that's required, uh, citywide. Um, you know, there's a whole curriculum and I'm happy to share that to you. So, you know, it's not, it's, there's the, and we're going to be promoting that more so people can, uh, self-develop and take that, uh, encourage people to do that because it's available.
All right. Thank you.
Yep. Uh, member Orlando?
I, I don't have any, uh, any guidance here at this time.
Member Carbone?
No, I appreciate the detail. Um, I mean, it's an easy one to, to bash on the surface, but when you look at the details and, and try to, to decide where to cut, uh, that becomes a little bit more difficult. Uh, and just by saying that at our next meeting, I'm sure we'll have some suggestions between now and then from the public. But when you look at that detail, it, it all kind of passes the, passes a sniff test to me. And I, I do like the fact it's cut from prior years.
Thanks for looking on all that. Uh, member Moore?
Yeah. I, I, I don't, I don't have any recommendations on anything you, that we could cut out of there. Um, you know, licenses and certifications and required training that, you know, personnel need to have. I mean, it is what it is. Um, and, uh, you know, conferences and stuff like that, and you know, a lot of that's been cut out. So I, I, I don't have any recommendations on anything further to cut. And, you know, like member Carbone said, I'm sure somebody will figure out something somewhere and we'll hear about it. But, um, I, I, I just, I'm looking through it. I don't see it.
Thank you. Uh, member Hernandez?
Yeah, I'll piggyback off a member more, kind of the same thing. And I think having a well-trained workforce is only of benefit to the residents. So that's all I got.
Member Perez?
Uh, well, I certainly wouldn't advocate to have an underpaid and uneducated staff. I don't see how that would benefit us. Um, I, I'm just asking for a little bit of detail on the thirty nine thousand that's allocated towards council. Um, I know TML is a portion of that. Can you, um, elaborate on what else is?
Sure.
Out of the thirty nine thousand?
So typically it's been, uh, TML, uh, there's a transportation summit that some have, uh, attended off the top of my head. I don't think that the, uh, Brazoria Days and Pearland Days are included in that at Austin, but I could be wrong about that. John, do you know?
Yeah. Uh, Mr. Pearson, I do believe that those are included at least a small amount. Plus we also have a membership to ATRAM, which is a longstanding membership that we've had. And then I think there are a couple of other memberships there, but mostly travel related for council.
TML, uh, those kinds of things.
Uh, look, I'm, uh, I think historically I've, I've, I, well, I'll just say this. I'm perfectly happy to pay my way to all of those. Um, that we can, uh, we can reduce that value if we want. Um, I, I don't want to micromanage the other departments. If, looking at the departments, the values associated with departments and knowing the amount of people that are in each of those departments, uh, I would say that we would probably find more excuses to raise this, uh, raise these values, uh, than to lower them. Um, engineering being an example, eighty three thousand, all of them, all of them that are PEs need, um, fifteen hours of professional development, uh, just to maintain their PE. And those are, uh, those are expensive hours to get. So, um, i- i- if we want, maybe we can revisit the thirty nine thousand and see if council, uh, maybe for this year or for future years would be more willing to pay their own way. Uh, I'm perfectly happy to do that. Uh, but other than that, I, I don't, I don't really see a whole lot more to squeeze personally.
Member Owens?
Yes, sir. This is mine, I guess. Yeah, I spent a lot of time and it was a total of eight hundred and fifty three thousand dollars that's going to be spent on that. I talked to, uh, the executive director of Tech Stop Mass, uh, the other day and, and I don't think we're going to do the A and M thing this year. I don't know if we're going to do the transportation forum, uh, this year in, in Austin. Uh, they're not decided on that yet. But there's some other things that the TML, National League of Cities, they're saying they're do, doing that virtual instead of, um, making the trips. So, so, you know, altogether, I don't know how the total eight hundred and fifty three thousand dollars is being spent. There's a lot for training, which is on our police department and what have you, uh, that necessary to be there. But I think there's also some areas that can be cut within there to take a look at it and see which ones could be cut. And to be honest with you, Clay, that the last time when I mentioned that, um, unbeknownst to me, I didn't pay much attention to it. Uh, you came back with a very sharp answer, uh, from whatever it was. And, uh, I've got three phone calls that night and I got stopped at the HEB twice the next day. And they said, Woody, we were waiting for you to come back. Said it was very unprofessional of the response from the city manager on there. And, you know, I didn't pay any attention to it, but I got some information. I can go back and look at it. So I think it's an hour and three minutes into the, or something like that into the program. Uh, but I spent a lot of time coming up with the total prices, you know, within each department, each one of the dues of a hundred and fifty two thousand dollars. And I thought, you know, as some of that with what we're going through right now, that it could be reduced down somewhat, uh, within this, but that's not what I got. It was kind of a blow off situation is what I got. Um, and from what I gather, I didn't appreciate it. A lot of people that's watching didn't appreciate it. And I've been told about it several times. And so I'm going to go back and look at it and you and I are going to have a conference.
Oh, the court. So, uh, you know, there, there's a, you know, uh, the detail was provided and, uh, the summary was added for this, uh, meeting. So if, uh, it's really in your court, if you, uh, you or there's, uh, others, we've heard from six, but if you have some questions about any specifics, happy to add even more to that background.
Well, the thing about it, it was, it was listed now, and I spent the time and effort to go through it to look, and I do every year for the budget. I've been doing it the last fifteen years on the city budget. And so, but the thing about it is take a look and see where we had and say, are what we're going through right now, are, are those actuals expenditures that we're going to go through? If it is, that's fine. If it's not, then let's look at doing something else with it. Uh, there's other areas that we can put that money into. But, but, you know, when you, when you look at that on the total amount for expenditures on that, plus the dues that we're going to do, you're talking over a million dollars. And that's a fairly significant amount, uh, through there. So that was brought to, to the attention of that.
Yep. So, uh, that's why we provide the references because, uh, if you add it up, it's a million dollars and that, uh, summary, uh, shows you, makes it easier. We gave you the detail before and now there's the departments and divisions. So that's all, uh, very easy to find there. So.
I mean, what do you, what, what do you want to do? Propose it? I mean, you want to cut another 10%, 50%? What do you want to do? Let's give them some direction so they move forward on it.
I don't need, I don't need to give directions, Tony. You can go back through and say, okay, this is, you know, are these going to be done? Are we going to do TML? We're going to do National League of Cities? Are we going to do whatever? You know, some of this in the, uh, eight hundred and fifty three thousand is for the police department, their training. And that's adequate and that's, that's exactly what it's for. And those things are there. But some of the other things that we know that we're going through a period of time that we're not going to do all these things as it is right now, probably not, not going to do them after the first of the year because of the way that, that it is right now.
So I mean, why don't?
I'm just saying, take another look at it and go through and see if that's what we need to do. If we do, that's fine and, and, and dandy. But if it's not, we can cut some of those things out. Let's do it.
Well, let's, let's do it. I mean, it, we can complain about every, every meeting and then we get to the second reading. It's going to be the same budget. I mean, say you want to cut it another 10%, 20% and let's give them, get a consensus and give them some direction and go.
Clay, I've got something for you. On the human resources citywide training, um, I'm, I'm assuming so that's, that's training for all of the employees that's, is under the HR umbrella. Is that what that is? Or is that just for HR?
No, no, that's citywide training by definition. It's everybody. Yeah.
Okay. So that's training that all departments participate in. That's why it's not broken down into the other departments.
Right. And it's got to, uh, procure it. So if we, I mean, it may, not every single thing would be purely citywide, but if we do our, uh, directors and divisions, uh, uh, we do that three times. So if we bring in a speaker for three thousand dollars, say, you know, something like that, that's, that's where that gets paid out of.
Okay. So, uh, just, just theoretically and, and, and Woody, Tony, y'all can walk this walk with me if you don't mind. If we were to take that, because it's a big number, um, and let's say chop off $10,000 of that, what would that impact be if we were to just say, we're going to slice $10,000 off of, off of the human resources, uh?
You know, Adrian, that's, that's, that's not what I'm talking about. It's a large amount. We know that when this thing on the virus, it's not going to be like reaching a light bulb and snapping it on and off and on there. And then when we go through the budget and, and take a look at it, even the finance department is saying, this is probably going to come out to be worse than what it was in two thousand and eight. We don't know that. So a lot of things, you know, why do we put these dollars in the budget if we don't know we're going to be using or not?
Well, yeah, I guess that's the point. I mean, do you want to say we're not going to use any of these dollars for the next three months? So let's cut it 25%. That's, you know, one quarter of the, the year? Or is it going to be, you know, just keep it in there because we don't know what's going to happen? So at least it's budgeted? Or are we just going to start just arbitrarily cutting? I mean, I'm, I'm trying to find out what the impact is, I guess.
No, no, you don't, you don't arbitrarily cut anything. You go back through and if you take a look, okay, we know TML is not going to happen. We know the National League of Cities not going to go on. So, you know, council usually goes to the net. So we have six or seven people going to that for three days up there. That's out. That's not going to happen. You know, we can, we could do it virtually. National League of Cities where it's New York or, you know, you know, San Francisco or whatever, we're not going to send people to there. It's going to be done virtually. So whatever the expense was previously, we can take that out. And that's what I'm telling, you know, we can look at what the training is. Now, if it's on-site type training that we do, you know, for police, fire, EMS or whoever, then certainly, you know, to keep up, uh, the registrations and things, that's something you, you have to keep in. But some of the virtual stuff that's going to be cut out, that we don't have to go out and send five or six people to go to this thing and pay for that. And it's going to be virtually done. You know, that's the other side. Look into the budget and find out where we're going to expend the damn expenses at. You know, and, and if we're not going to do it, let's cut those things out. But if we are going to do it, leave them in. I have no problems with that at all.
Do, do we have a, do we have a number on what travel and lodging is, I guess in proportion to the total on a lot of these?
No, because, uh, you know, the detail there, we, we, so if there was a seminar or program, you know, you develop a, a budget for that. So we don't try to slice. It would be very difficult to, uh, I mean, it's not, I mean, so you want to go to National League of Cities or something, you, you, you budget for the registration, the, uh, uh, transportation and the lodging, for instance. So that's what that shows.
Yeah. And you know, the thing about it, the budgets for this year is based on what happened last year. That's where you get your budget from.
So the budget from last, the actual last year?
Things, that's where you get it from.
Uh, Clay, let me, let me just, instead of just talking about it, let me just kind of maybe hopefully provide you some direction.
Please.
My perspective, uh, I think we need to slash the city budget at least in half. I don't see any of us going to any of the, um, we're not going to go to TML. That's been canceled. Um, if, uh, if we get into, if, uh, Pearland Day and Brazoria County Day happen, uh, I'm perfectly happy, uh, paying our own way. Um, and that should, that should cut, uh, some of it. Uh, but there's, there's probably a likelihood that those events get cut. So let's start off by cutting that in half. That's not a huge issue. Uh, I think we deal with this the same way we dealt, we talked about with the, um, uh, with the parks department funding. Um, let's keep the allocation in mid-year. Let's take a look at what we would normally have spent between the time the budget was adopted and the first, um, the first budget amendment. And if we have not allocated that, if we've not spent that money, then I would say that we move that into fund balance to get that or put it over into streets. That, that would be my direction.
Yeah, I think, you know, some of those things, Trent, too, we can call, we can find out if, uh, Brazoria County Day is going to go there. We can find out if Pearland Days are going to go there or not, or whatever they're planning to do. And, and, you know, those, those are not really high dollar things, but they're dollar things that we can, we can remove off of it. So, you know, I'm just saying, pay a little bit more attention to what we're spending the money on. If it's somebody to get licensed or keep the registration and stuff like that, hey, that's part of the, that's part of the city. You know, and, and that's, that's part of it. So.
Does, does anybody else, uh, anybody object to what I suggested or?
Uh, member Perez, yeah, I, I, I think, uh, your suggestion is fine. Uh, moving it forward, I think is appropriate. Um, so I think, you know, if we do find better use for the money, we can discuss, discuss it at a later time. It's not going to make, and that's why I asked the impact question. I don't think removing a little bit here or there is really going to make an impact particularly on the tax rate discussion, uh, in this fiscal cycle anyway. So, uh, I think again, just trying to find a better use for the money down the road is probably the most appropriate.
Yeah. If we can't use the money this year, then we can put it to savings next year and hopefully it has a positive effect on, on the tax rate then.
I'd see us come up with a number and say, hey, right now you've got a, a little over a million dollars in professional development. Scrub it, get down to, I mean, last year, the amended budget was six fifty. Um, get down to, to, I don't know, eight hundred. Cut, cut 20% more of it, throw it to general fund. And if things open up in mid-year, then maybe we can reallocate it. But I, I'm, I don't want. I, I'm, I don't wanna just say, oh, don't spend it, don't spend it. And we look up and we're gonna be on track, on budget mid-year and we hadn't saved anything. So I get it with parks on this. I'd rather, I'd, I'd rather give the direction to cut it back, let take some of what Woody said and, and look at it and find where you wanna cut it. And, and cut it and bring it back to us. And put the reserves just to the fund balance so, so that we can have that, uh, with the uncertainty ahead of us.
I, I mean, I think that, uh, what, what I'm hearing and what I've, what I'm reading is that staff's gone through it and they've cut it by ten percent. By trying to, uh, trying to eliminate everything it feel like is certainly inappropriate. If we wanna give them a direction to say, cut it by another ten percent, um, we can do that. And then that ten percent goes into fund balance, uh, and then mid-year we can reallocate it. Um, i- if that's what you're suggesting, Tony, I, I'm fine. I mean, the money's fungible, so we can move it back and forth. Uh, if we need to, but I'm, I'm with you in that. We just need to give them direction and kinda move on from this item.
Yeah. Woody, where are you at on that?
Well, you've heard my concern on, on that, uh, previously and as it is right now. I just think, you know, if, if we do a little due diligence on it, find out what's gonna happen and what, you know, far as are any of these other things that we normally go to? Uh, if they're not gonna happen, it's gonna be virtually, then that, that's something to look at. If it's professional license or training, it's a police department or fire department or E M S or whatever, those things are something that we really have to do in order to keep those, uh, up, you know, for the people that, that live in the city. And so just spend a little time. I mean, it's just not like going in and say, okay, we spent this amount last year, so we're gonna increase it twenty percent because of this year. We can't do that. And I'm not saying you play with y'all doing that, but I'm just saying that, you know, that, uh, you know, on stuff like that. And, and you know, my previous experience on budgets for twenty-eight years, I've seen it go in like that. And then after a while, then the, the budget's passed and those dollars are reallocated to other places. Within there.
Time to reallocate it. Take control of it.
Yeah.
What we're trying to do.
I, I think we've got three council members kinda sorta saying the same thing, just different delivery methods. Do we wanna let anybody else jump in on this and the other members? So we can try to get to four and make a compromise on this.
If, if we're talking about cutting this ten percent and bringing it back to us, then fine, i- if, if that's what we need to do.
This is little. I, I think we, rather than going through each department and saying, okay, you need to cut this conference, you need to cut this, uh, membership. We give them a percentage to cut and they're better equipped to determine where they can cut, uh, by department, not us. So I say we give them a percentage to cut, uh, this professional development budget and, and let them figure it out.
So there's, there's a consensus. We'll cut, give, give direction to cut ten percent, put it to fund balance and bring that back.
Do you still wanna cut, uh, city councils, uh, by half?
That's fine.
That's fine.
Yeah.
Cut councils in half, put it into.
It's not, it's not up to us to do it. The thing about it, when you, when you bring the numbers up and you wanna take a look at it, then the staff comes back, say, okay, well, yeah, we can, we can reduce here, we can reduce there. You know, and they're, they're not gonna have this or they're not gonna have that this year or whatever. And they can make their decisions on it. Just look at it. You know, that's what we're, we're here. We're coming back and saying, we feel like this is probably too high right now with the conditions that everything is in, you know, within, within the whole state or in the nation. So let's just take a look at it and see if that's expenditures that we really need to do. You make the decisions whether, you know, we need to do it or not.
I, on, on the item E.
That was E.
That was E.
I'm sorry, that's that, then pass on to me.
So, uh, you know, I'm trying, I would need, we need to get direction. So what I heard a consensus was, I mean, there was some, uh, variations, but
Consensus, Clay, on cut council in half and try to bring everything down ten percent, bring it back to us, put the ten percent towards general fund.
That's what I was gonna say. All right. So those are the specific things that, uh, identified as, uh, changes, uh, that you.
One thing, Clay, did Mr. Hernandez also ask a specific thing just in this meeting today? That we should just go, it was, um, relating to the water billing issue, the recommended change from thirty to fifty dollars for repeat use. Could we just do that in the same vein and hopefully that's fast?
Sure. So, um, uh, Johnny McCary's still on. So can we state that so everybody's clear? That was the, uh, the, uh, what used to be called the reconnecting fee.
Processing fee, yeah.
And so, um, the idea was we were trying to, uh, make that clearer about, uh, what it was for. That was part of the confusion. And I think the recommendation was to, uh, try bringing that to from thirty to fifty to cover the costs. Is that, I'm recollecting that?
I believe so. I, I think in the budget, we have that moving up and renaming it. So we would still rename it. We just wouldn't increase from thirty to fifty. I believe that was.
That's only, that's only for the, so right now it's thirty for the first reconnect and fifty for the second reconnect. And I think the recommendation was to move it to just a flat fifty. And my, uh, question was, could we move it to just a flat thirty? Um, just try not to put, put that burden on the residents.
John, any background on that? Or we wanna ask him for consensus to change that?
I think if we get consensus, we can, we can change that.
All right. Uh, member Little, Mayor Portem Little, you good at that?
Well, I'm good with it.
Member Orlando.
I'm okay with them.
Member Carbone. Uh, member Moore.
Yep.
Member Hernandez.
He brought it up.
Perez.
Yeah, we're good.
Member Owens.
Yes.
All right. So that's a F on that part. And then the, the section two was updates, you know, uh, we work on the budget, uh, staff does for months. And then, uh, you know, there's numbers that come in at the end. We're trying to keep it always current. Uh, so there's a couple of updates that were recapped in that section two. Uh, John, do you think you else you need to highlight on that?
Nope, I don't think so. If there's anything in particular that, uh, needed further clarification or, or anything like that, we're here for that.
Anything on that section two? It's on the memo. And then section three, John, those are just more information requests. We've got a whole slew of, you know, uh, just clarification items, background, additional information, uh, any questions on those? Those make sense?
Nope. Just a, a thank you. Most of them were, uh, were mine and appreciate the diligence in getting those pulled together so fast. Really appreciate it.
Yeah. Any other members on info requests generally or specifically?
I mean, are we talking about, I guess, number forty-six? We running all the way down there?
Yep.
Um, I mean, I'm, I guess I'm fine. I don't know if we got a clear answer earlier, but, um,
Yeah.
I mean, as long as we've, we're giving the, the customers enough grace and opportunities to get on a plan. Um, I mean, we do need to have the threat of late fees to start, to start chasing some of that money in.
Yeah.
Um, so, I mean, a- as long as, as long as we've reached out to them several times and if somebody's just saying, hey, no, I'm not paying 'cause there's no late fee. I, I want, I want staff to be able to say, no, there is a late fee.
Sir, uh, thanks for bringing that back up. So, uh, member Perez had, um, summarized that at the time. So I kind of echoed that as a, a way to go forward and, and, uh, not get too much farther behind. So any other thoughts on that part? All right. So, uh, as.
I got, uh, number fifty-three.
So that's.
The, the P card.
Yep.
Clay? This is Woody. I, I, I've got one question. And, uh, has to do on the water. And it's been asked several times how much that we are in the arrears. I don't care what the number is. I'd just like to know the number.
So there's, there, there's no quote unquote arrears. It was, uh, that was talked about at the, uh, water section. And, uh, member Carbone had brought that up and we'll re-quantify that from the last update.
All right. Will you do that for me?
That was already asked for, for member Carbone and others. Yes.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Back to number fifty-three, the P card. I appreciate the info spent or the, the info provided on the P card, um, purchases. I mean, that, I, I guess we're not gonna see a line item for P card expense, correct?
So, yeah, at the very beginning of the memo, um, you know, the way that something gets paid is immaterial, as you know, it's, uh, it all gets accounted for. And so there wouldn't be, and there wouldn't be proper to. So the, the expense gets charged to the right place and what, whether it gets paid by a wire or whatever the case is. So. The only line item, I'm sorry, uh, would be the rebate that we get back the credit.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, I, I get it. I appreciate the write-up and I just wanted to call it out 'cause there's a lot of questions. And I mean, that is, uh, that is an area of fraud concern under every audit I've gone through. And, um, they do look at and test that and make sure the controls are in place. Uh, I'd also like to, to say thanks for that dashboard, um, and all that raw data. Um, it's, it, it, it's overwhelming. Um, but I mean, it's there and whoever wants to dig, dig into the raw data in that file, you can. And then even better is that, uh, Power B I dashboard, um, that you can, a- anybody can just drill right down to it. It's, it, it's pretty amazing. I wish all governmental entities had that level of, uh, of transparency. And I mean, that really helps to, to answer and quantify a lot of questions. And if we can somehow add that activity-based costing into it at some point, that'd be even, even better. Um, but I, I certainly appreciate that. Um, last item will be number forty-four. Um, that's the, I guess, the, the difference between kinda what the, the, the cities put together in terms of, of police officer pay and what the P P O A has put together. Um, but I, I guess, um, when I, I look at it from from the, the, the P P O A standpoint, I, I believe their, their survey and kind of the data they've put together um, use the same methodology that we have since twenty sixteen, the last time we engaged the class and comp study. Um, so I mean, to, to me, that seems, um, that seems like a more accurate, um, an, an accurate number, um, versus using, I guess, this new Gallagher study that was done in Baytown last year. Um, I mean, I think Gallagher bid on, on our, um, on the last class and comp. I don't know who we're going with this time, but um, uh, if I recall correctly, Gallagher didn't, didn't rate very high last time. So it, it just kinda seems a little disingenuous to use them now to, to paint us in a really good, hey, we're only one point nine, nine percent low um, versus reality and how we've, we've done it in the past. We've been closer to, to a six percent low.
Do we have to listen to shit all night?
Hey, Woody, you're not on mute.
You are not on mute. Hey, um, To- uh, Tony, I would say, um, why don't we do this? We go into the, uh, comp and class study. Why don't we give, uh, the P P O A study to the consultant who's doing this? Doing that and have them, uh, put a memo into, uh, that background and how that gets, um, uh, how that gets inputted into the, uh, or have that allocated into that comp and class study for that particular department. That way we can look at everybody all at once.
No, that works. You got anything to add to that, Woody?
I love listening to this all night.
I, I just, can I jump in and say, number forty-three, I really appreciate that, uh, response, by the way, on the list of HOAs. I did have a, a question that kinda popped up, um, kinda recently on the, um, the Amazon that we use. I guess we're using the Amazon Business Prime account. Um, it, and I know that it has the ability for, um, purchases to be put through for, I guess, confirmation or approval by, by, you know, supervisors, things like that. Is that a feature that we are currently using just as a, uh, control measure?
Yes, sir. We have set up in the system thresholds based on dollar amounts. And I don't have those offhand, but we'd happen to get those for you. Um, and by commodity type. So somebody in, you know, public works can't go buy a new computer without, um, I T it for me and things like that. So yes, we are taking advantage of that, um, and, and rolling that out and expect to expand that in the future, but currently using it absolutely.
Okay, great. Yeah, I think that, that was another concern, I think, that was brought forward, uh, by a resident, just kind of like, why are we buying things on Amazon? And letting people go on there and buy whatever they want. And, you know, I, I, having those controls in place, I think is a great, great tool for us to be utilizing. So, uh, the Amazon system, I think, is, is a good system, uh, in that respect. So I appreciate the feedback.
Follow up, Clay, if I remember correctly, is it the case that, uh, e- employees who have been, uh, who have not followed the established expense policy have been disciplined or even terminated if it was the egregious and that that's checked regularly?
Right. I mean, as, uh, member Carbone said, I mean, any purchasing process, you gotta look at, at those. And, uh, there have been cases unfortunately where people have, uh, have been egregious or repeated and had to take action. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Appreciate the interest.
So that's the materials we had. Um, we've got the public hearing on the budget in the, uh, next week. And then the readings in September. Um, and we'll, uh, follow up on the, the idea is to answer questions and, and, uh, get consensus and, you know, bring you back the, uh, I mean, the city's general funds and eighty-eight million dollar, eighty-nine million dollar, uh, spend for all the different things we do. And, uh, you'll adopt it at that fund level, but, you know, we, we, we provide you mu- much detail that, uh, what goes into that. And thank the staff, uh, as you have and appreciate your noticing that. And, uh, we'll be back to you next week. So Mayor, I think, uh, there's no action on this item other than the consensus you already took. And so that's all we have for, uh, I believe you did have an executive session.
That was a good discussion. I, I appreciate, appreciate listening to that. Let's move to item number nine, Mayor and council issues for city council discussion. And there were none tonight. Item ten is executive session under Texas government code and is a two, two item, item, and item number one.
Uh, Mayor, Mayor Reed, uh, this is Darren. I just wanted to clarify, we're only gonna be going into exec session on the second item, not the first item.
Yeah. I was gonna say, item number one will not be considered tonight.
That is correct.
And moving to item number two, executive session under five, five, one point zero seven four, personnel matters regarding appointments and or change to membership of boards and commissions. And that's the, that's the item for our discussion tonight. Darren, you wanna pick up on that for me?
Uh, yes, Mayor. Uh, well, uh, yes, we'll be going into exec session. And, uh, what the council will do is we'll, uh, exit this meeting. I sent everybody a separate invite for the exec session. Everybody will be joining that meeting separately. And then, of course, we will, uh, when it's time to, uh, come back and, uh, to, to the open portion of the council meeting, the council will come back in and then, uh, uh, reconvene at that time. And then the meeting can be adjourned from the open meeting at that point.
Everybody head to exec session.
Yeah. Yeah.
The question is now back, the council is now back in an open session. And item number 11, 11 is new business continued. Considering potential action regarding appointment and or change to membership of the boards and commissions. And no action, I understand no action will be taken on this item. Okay, item number 12 is other business, none. Item 13 is adjournment, which we shall do at 11:20.
Pearland is in the business of being pro-business. From retail to research, medical to manufacturing, corporate to central hubs. We are one of the fastest growing areas in the nation, and that gives businesses a significant boost. Our diverse workforce is educated and motivated, and well, happy. The people of Pearland love the close-knit feel of a sophisticated and right-sized community only minutes from Houston. And many reverse commute to Pearland from surrounding areas to work for businesses here. One shining star is the 1,200-acre Lower Kirby District. As the southern anchor of Houston's famous Kirby Drive.